Good evening, West Orange, and welcome to the Township Council meeting for June 27, 2023. I'm Joe Fagan, Public Information Officer. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to our Council President, Council President Tammy Williams.
Thank you. Good evening, West Orange, and welcome to our 14th meeting of this year. Madam Clerk, the opening statement, please.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975.
Thank you.
Wait, I'm not done, I'm sorry.
Okay.
The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's office on November 23, 2022, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 1, 2022. Councilwoman Castelina?
Present.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Present.
Councilwoman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa?
Present.
Council President Williams?
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So last month's meet, last council meeting, we had a proclamation on for events that we were unable to get to. So I had asked Gia from Willow and Olivia to come and receive the Pride proclamation. However, we're going to start with a proclamation for Dr. Farley. Dr. Farley, if you are unaware, is retiring after 30 years of instruction, teaching, and not just the West Orange School District, but also the Irvington School District. Dr. Farley is very, very well-known for our step team and our Jubilee Choir. Many years ago, he started the Jubilee Choir, which was really a gospel choir at Irvington High School. And then, when he transferred to the West Orange School District, he kept those groups and organizations going. So I am going to ask Dr. Farley if he will join me at the podium. So this proclamation reads, whereas Dr. William Farley is retiring from West Orange High School after 22 years, where he has served as the music director for the Honors Chamber and Tenor Bass Choirs, piano lab instructor, and general music classes, and whereas he received his bachelor's from Westminster Choir College and master's at Montclair State University, both in music education, his extracurricular activities include advisor and director of the Jubilee Choir, an auditioned group, and coach advisor of the award-winning boys' step team. He started his career at Irvington High School in 1991 and worked until 2000, teaching and overseeing the choir. Doctor, whereas Dr. Farley has changed and impacted so many young lives at West Orange High School by creating an environment that facilitates and encourages creativity. Even after his students graduate, he continues to support them throughout their adult lives. Some of those include Okirietye Amandawon, who originated the roles of Hercules, Mulligan, and James Madison in Hamilton, starred in Grey's Anatomy and Station 19, Warner Miller, a stage and screen actor who got his break in American Gangster, Luke Cage, Boardwalk Empire, and currently on manifest, James Gibbs, a renowned trumpeter, music producer, bandleader, and educator, Gabriela Rodriguez, West Orange High School singer and theater star who toured in The Color Purple nationally in 19, 2019 and '20, and Melody Ector, now a keyboard player for the alt-pop group King Princess. And whereas, Dr. William Farley will leave a great legacy at West Orange High School and will be missed by all those who have worked with or learned from here, from him. Now for their, now therefore, Mayor Susan McCartney and the Council of the Township of West Orange, in recognition of William's dedication to the faculty and students of West Orange High School, his family and friends, declare June 17, 2023, Will, Dr. William Farley throughout the Township of West Orange. Thank you. If my colleagues can please join us for a photo opportunity.
My sixth speech, but I just want to thank. Yeah. Hey, Council. You know, I served in the United States Navy, and I was glad to serve my country. But I'm even more proud to say that I served. And I tell my students, you know, sometimes when you graduate, you think about self, but as you progress, you realize it's about service. And I'm just glad to have service, this community of West Orange and the students. Thank you very much.
I attended Dr. Farley's graduation, not graduation, because you're not really graduating, but his scholarship event at the Wilshire Grand just a couple of weeks ago. And I have to tell you, I have never, ever, ever had church at the Wilshire Grand before in my life. But it was a wonderful ceremony, salute, and just a show of love by all the lives that you have touched, not only just again in West Orange, but also to see those people from many, many years ago at Irvington High School come back and salute you and give you honor, just is a testament to your years of service and what you have done for this community. So again, we thank you.
Excuse me, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Farley. I just wanted to jump in. I had the privilege and the honor of serving on the school board when you first came into the district. And I remember all the programs that you brought in to West Orange High School and just seeing the transformation of just the enjoyment that our students receive from everything that you brought to them and the quality of the programming and just see the students excel in such a way has been just amazing to watch. And you're really, you're really going to be missed up there. And thank you so much for always thinking of the youth of West Orange.
Thank you.
Good luck. Enjoy.
And our next proclamation, if you'll join me here at the podium. Last month, we had a packed agenda, a very long meeting, and were not able to honor Pride. And what we have had and continue to have in West Orange is not only a welcoming, diverse community, but one that allows people to love just because love is love. And so, in West Orange, we have been champions of Pride Month. It has come in many, many different forms throughout the years, but always with a flag raising and always led by this beautiful woman who stands by my side, who is a business owner here in town, as I mentioned, at Willow and Olivia, who is a stand-up and stellar citizen, and certainly one who advocates for all of us to just be loved. So with that, I am going to read the proclamation. And I asked Gia if she would come and receive this proclamation on behalf of the community, because without her leadership, determination, and conviction to make sure that we in West Orange continue to recognize Pride, then it would be a much more unwelcoming community. So with that, this proclamation reads, whereas the Township of West Orange supports the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom from discrimination, and whereas all people, regardless of age, gender, identity, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical challenges, have the right to be treated on the basis of their intrinsic value as human beings. And whereas the Township of West Orange accepts and welcomes people of diverse backgrounds and believes a diverse population leads to a more vibrant community, and whereas the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, transgender, and queer communities contribute to the cultural, civic, and economic successes of the Township of West Orange, and whereas while we as a society at large are slowly embracing new definitions of sexuality and gender, we must also acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to indiscrimination and prejudice. And whereas to acknowledge the efforts to bring awareness to the continuing evolution to the gay pride movement, the Township of West Orange will display the rainbow flag representing light, healing sun, calmness, art, and spirit in front of Township Hall for the month of June. Now therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Susan McCartney and the Council members of the Township of West Orange hereby proclaim that June 2023 as Gay Pride Month in the Township of West Orange and encourage our residents to reflect on the ongoing struggle for equality members of the LGBTQ+ community face and celebrate the contributions that embrace our township. Thank you.
We're lucky enough to have G on our downtown alliance board.
Okay, I'll make it, I'll make it quick. Thank you, Council members, Township. This is very important. Without the backing of the Council, I believe, like, we would not get a lot happening in Township. So I really appreciate this. I appreciate everything you guys do to back everything the public wants happening in town, and it's greatly appreciated. This is very important, because we, the community, the LGBTQ+ community, make up a great deal of West Orange, and you don't see it, because we are everyday neighbors and we blend in. But when we put on the Pride event, you see us, you hear us, we come out, and you realize that we are your neighbors, and we are important, and we do reside in West Orange, and we are part of your community, your everyday community. And we love to be celebrated, because we are, we are who we are, and we love who we love. And it really has nothing to do with what you believe it has to do with, but we celebrate our love because we are inclusive. And, and that is it, that is it. And when we sit in front of Town Hall and we raise that flag, it is risen for everyone in West Orange, not just the LGBTQI+ community, it's everyone in West Orange. And that is why we do it. And that is why we will continue to do it. And that is why we love having the backing of the Council and whoever the mayor is, because it reflects positively in West, of West Orange. And that is what we love.
Thank you.
These are just a few photos from the Pride Flag Raising and Festival. Great job. Thank you so much. Also, would like to acknowledge that on Wednesday, June 21, it was National Indigenous Peoples' Day. Typically, that is a Canadian holiday, but we use that opportunity to recognize that the Nanakoke Leni Lenape, Ramapo Lenape, and Pohatán Renape tribal nations, whose land those of us in New Jersey occupy, celebrate the invaluable contributions Indigenous communities have made to our state. So again, just wanted to acknowledge those who are Indigenous for National Indigenous Peoples' Day. Also, on Juneteenth, unfortunately, we don't have the video available to be queued. We'll work on that for the next meeting. But we did hold a Juneteenth Flag Raising and Festival here at Town Hall. It will be also posted on social media, but it was a wonderful event with vendors, speakers. We had Congressman Donald Pang. We had remarks provided for Lieutenant Governor Sheila Oliver. We also had our county Democratic Chairman, as well as State Party Chairman, Mr. Leroy Jones. And myself and the mayor spoke to commemorate Juneteenth and the date that the slaves in Texas learned of their freedom two years after the Emancipation Proclamation. So stay tuned for that. And now we will move on to remarks from our chief. I know that there were some concerns at the last council meeting regarding our Fourth of July celebration. And so I have asked the chief if he would come and just give some brief remarks to the community about the safety plans and the flow of the day.
Good evening, Council. Thank you. Chief Abbott is out of town right now, so he's asked me to come and speak to you about a few things that we're doing, specifically the fireworks. We're working hard. We're doing everything we can to make this an enjoyable and safe experience. However, it is our opinion that West Orange High School is not conducive to safely hold these fireworks. We've totally outgrown this event. We've had a big showing last year, larger than we anticipated. This originally started where it was on one field, it was on the baseball field and the practice field. That moved over to the soccer field. Now, last year, it moved on to the west side, which was Pleasant Valley Way. Pleasant Valley Way was gridlocked. We had no control over that crowd at all. We don't have access to bomb dogs, to magnetometers, or any of those things. So we just want to be clear where we stand with that. But again, we're going to work hard. We're going to do everything we can to make this a safe and enjoyable event. But we want to share with you our views and our opinion of where we stand with this. Are there any questions?
Deputy Chief, so I, I had asked the mayor, I was in the meeting last week that they had, and maybe you could share with the Council how OEM's involvement this year versus last year, and, and that you can't go over all the security measures that are going to be implemented this year, because we're on television, but just to, there is a different game plan.
We always have our Office of Emergency Management on, on board. We have the county involved. We ask for them for other resources. They are providing the equipment, but they can't provide manpower. We're going to do our best with what we have. Again, this turned into a large event. Large events from a public safety aspect is handled differently. Again, we don't know who's coming. We don't know how many people are coming. We don't have any, any idea where we're, where we're going to be with this. I mean, it could be less people than last, last year, and it could be double that. We had a pretty good handle on the fields, but our west side was wide open, and there's really nothing we can do with that. Our calls for service from town residents go through the roof that day, between firework shots fired, parking complaints. So we're busy on that end also. So also on Conforty Avenue, we have issues on Conforty Avenue, Eagle Rock Avenue, because the county usually posts where residents can go watch the New York fireworks. However, New York decided to move the fireworks this year, and it will not, from what I understand, it's not beautiful there this year. So we may get those people also. So again, we're putting everything into place. We're still working hard. We have another meeting tomorrow. But again, with an event this large, we don't know what we're walking into. We did have an issue last year, which some of yous know about, and there's nothing we can tell you to prevent something like that. And where something like that could go sideways quick.
Any other questions for my colleagues?
Council President, if I may. Deputy Chief, so with regard to the incident that happened last year, once it happened and the crowd began to move, there was no way to direct the low, the movement of the crowd.
Yes.
Do we have any mechanism to control crowd flow either in or out?
What we're looking to do this year is to get an outside fence company in to actually move the fences, so we have more ways in and out if something like that is to occur. Again, the final plan hasn't been put into place yet. We're still reviewing it with our Office of Emergency Management and with the equipment that we're going to be getting to the county. But yes, we're, we're looking to do everything to prevent something like that. The west side is, is, we're concerned about that west side.
And if you could just share with us for those who may not understand.
Pleasant Valley Wayside. Again, this originally where this was just on the baseball field. Expand it. We had some issues where we met with Hayden Moore, our superintendent.
Yeah, he was in the meeting.
The first words out of his mouth was, this is not conducive to West Orange High School. Unfortunately, there's nowhere else in town where we think we could safely host this.
There's ours, there were some soft spots identified that were not covered last year that they're gonna, I won't get into detail, but it will be covered this year. Mr. Moore identified some areas that will be roped off. And so, you know, the kids can't get in that way. And, and just so the public knows, wondering what happened, there were some kids that showed up and they had lit off some fire, firecrackers in one of these areas. And that will, you know, again, you can never prevent a kid from doing that. And, you know, it scared a lot of people. And, and they panicked. So this was after the fireworks. So all was great until the fireworks got over. We also talked a little bit about a lot of the kids Uber to the event. So we need to see if Uber could do anything about not dropping and picking people off at the high school. Not sure if that can happen or not happen, because the kids afterwards were hanging, you know, around. A lot of kids showed up that weren't from the township. Mr. Moore came with his security team and the high school principal, and they wanted to, you know, there, there's, you know, kids that come from other towns sometimes. And, and so we've asked for the security, there are security guards to see if they have anybody that's available to work, so they could identify our kids versus not our kids. So yeah, there's a lot that goes on. And I appreciate all the efforts that they're trying to do to make it as safe as possible for our residents. We're not advertising this year at all for the event, because I don't think the kids who aren't flyers from out of town.
We always have that social media threat with flash mobs. It is posted. The Board of Education did post it, and all the information on that was not accurate. So these are, these are things we're working through also.
Cleaning things up to make it safe.
So I have a question. It seems like Mr. Moore doesn't seem like it's a good location. He's our superintendent, right? Used to be over at the high school at the dean. The chief also doesn't think it's a good location, and why are we having it? Just out of curiosity, I remember when we were having our budget meeting, Mr. Gross, it was brought up too about not, possibly not having it.
So if you cancel at this stage of the game, I mean, that's, I don't know, is that up to the business administrator?
Well, we, we had the discussion back then at that point in time. And I said it that evening, as well as others, that, that this was going to be very difficult for us. And we, 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 we committed to, to go back and relook at all of our, our different concerns and our ability to control the site. And that's the, that's why the chief's here tonight, because to report to you what we found in terms of it. I mean, a lot of towns have, have, quite frankly, have decided not to do fireworks. And that's what's, that, that kind of compounds. They, they've decided not to do it, many towns, because they were concerned about their ability. Some have not done it, because they found out that because of incidents that they needed, you know, that they needed to stop doing it. That puts more pressure on us, because we've become one of the few games in town, or in the towns, for, for people to go to, to go to. And that, that put in, that makes us grow even larger than, than we did. So that's a concern. In terms of, you know, the court, look, this is a, we, we, we're now, we're now keeping track of all special events costs. This is estimated to be a cost of the total project of about $81,000. The, you know, the fireworks that we're committed to, at, at this point, we are committed to that, whether, whether we have the event or not. There are a lot of expenses that go into it. We wouldn't incur if you, Council decided not to have the event. But that's a decision for the Council to make.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm concerned about safety. We talked about this in the budget, Mr. Keough. And, you know, I, I understand Councilwoman was in a meeting. I don't know if they shared the, the security plan with you. I've not seen it.
They were developing it.
The, the security plan has not been finalized yet, and we don't, we should put that out in our public.
You want us to vote on it? No, we're not asking you to vote on anything. The fireworks weren't here tonight. Well, fireworks, yes. That, that, that is, I mean, just like you, you're required to issue a permit or authorize for a permit, just like, just like all of the other places in town. So that is your, that you're required to do that. As far as safety is concerned, if we're going to have the event, obviously, our, our public safety department is in charge of that. And then, and again, they don't, we don't disclose sensitive information such as security plans.
Same thing with the street fair. On the street, you know, the street fair went very well. We didn't have any issues with the street fair.
We have an operation plan for every time there's an event, Juneteenth event, the Pride event. We always have an operational plan for that.
I understand. What we discussed in that meeting, and so maybe, maybe I didn't articulate myself well. And I'm talking about during that meeting. My, my concern was because we had an incident that revealed a vulnerability. And the response to that incident, at least based on what you've said so far, is that there's not much we can do to prevent a similar incident like that from happening. And so for me, to vote to whether to have it or not, what I said to Mr. Keough, what I've said in these council meetings, is I'd like to know that we're able to do it safely, or, you know, relatively safely. You'll never get rid of 100% of any risk. And I understand that. But one of the things that would help me feel more comfortable with it is understanding what we're going to do about those specific vulnerabilities that were revealed as a result of the issue of last year. You know, I got calls, as everybody else did, from folks that thought they were going to be stampeded, run over, some people that got caught up in the crowd. And I'm grateful that it ended up not being as serious as the initial reports, you know, as well as I do. There, the, some of those initial reports were gunshots. There's no way.
And it was, and it was firecrackers.
I'm so glad. I'm grateful for that. But it just revealed some vulnerabilities that I would want to have some confidence have been addressed. And it, it doesn't seem like there.
Looking at those vulnerabilities and others, that's why we were taking this position that that venue- Looking at those vulnerabilities and others, that's why we were taking this position that that venue is not conducive to public safety.
So is that your recommendation that we not do it?
That's our statement as a police department.
Right. I mean, because that's what I'm hearing, right? And I want to be clear because it doesn't sound like that was what was said in the meeting. Or maybe it was, but, oh, I, well, I think, I think we were rather clear that that there were safety issues that, that we were concerned about and that we, that the, that, that the, the and I think Mr. Keough came right out and basically said that, that, that the site wasn't conducive. And we've, we've talked about that. And so, I mean, you know, we, we, we've done everything that we promised to do. We're here tonight. I don't think the, the police department is now articulating it officially. Certainly, we've all been talking about it unofficially that there's, there's.
But we didn't hear about that. There was no follow up with us regarding.
We're here tonight. We're here tonight to follow up with you. That, that's what we promised to come back to you.
So if we have any additional comments or commentary, we'll address those when we get to the resolution. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Well, you, you want the chief to stay till then or you, you have anything more for him to listen to?
If, I, I, do you mind if you could just stay? Yes, that, that we'd appreciate it. Okay. I'll try and move it up to the beginning of the agenda. All right. Thank you. Um, okay. Uh, we did not have an opportunity to go over liaison announcements at the last meeting and we find ourselves at the seven o'clock hour this evening as well. Does anyone have any liaison announcements that are imperative? Or can we postpone that till later on in the agenda? Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section Five of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter Two Thirty-One, Public Law Nineteen Seventy-Five. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December first, twenty-twenty-two. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Please note that she is present for the record. She stepped out.
Thank you. Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Present.
Council President Williams?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you. We normally open our meeting with public comment and we will continue in that vein. So if there's anyone in council chambers, please be prepared and get ready after Ms. Fagan, Mr. Fagan, our public information officer brings his remarks, then you are more than welcome to come to the podium. Each member has five minutes to address your concerns. Mr. Fagan.
Thank you, Council President. This evening I will try to be as brief as possible. There is a, a resolution on the agenda this evening that refers to a resolution commemorating the two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary of the establishment of the United States. And this is a commemoration that would advance the role that history plays in our community education tourism scholarship in in, in New Jersey. We have several instances in New Jersey, in West Orange, I'm sorry, that specifically relate to the Revolutionary War that would be highlighted as part of this commemoration. And one would be the Jemima Condit diary. She was a young woman from West Orange. Obviously, it wasn't West Orange at that time, but she kept a diary between the years of seventeen seventy-two to seventeen seventy-nine. And that diary, that original diary that she kept is in the possession of the New Jersey Historical Society. And it would be possible for us to get and display that in West Orange. Now, in what was captured in that diary is on April twenty-third, seventeen seventy-five, when colonists faced off of the British at Concord and Lexington. It was recorded in her diary that every day brings new trouble. This day brings news that they began to fight near Boston, which of course was the beginning of the Revolutionary War. And this is Jemima Condit's grave in the Orange Cemetery here. Also, what we would have in West Orange would be the story of Mary Williams, whose family was divided over the cause for American independence. We have a marker placed by the downtown West Orange Alliance for Mary Williams. When Mary Williams and her husband Nathaniel Williams split up this colonial clock that I now own was their clock, was their clock. It was a wedding gift in seventeen fifty. And that original clock, I would consider displaying that at a venue in West Orange to commemorate a revolution in New Jersey. Of course, Tory Corner is directly tied into the Williams family. You're very familiar with seeing the front of the monument. On the back of the monument, Mary Williams is specifically mentioned. And of course, the main Tory Corner is almost two-hundred-and-fifty years old. I took the liberty of placing Mary Williams Monument at her gravesite in the Orange Cemetery prior to installation. I have a scam alert that Council President wanted me to mention. And scammers are getting so ingenious. You see this URL, maybank2u.com. It's a hypothetical URL. But what scammers are now doing is you have to look closely at that second A. Here's another example, citibank.com and that second A. And what it is, it's substituting Cyrillic characters for Roman letters that look similar, such as the lowercase a. And hackers can direct a user to a, a different website than the one they intended to visit. And if, if there are any questions, if you have any questions about any website you're on, simply log off and call customer service for the institution that you're trying to get in touch with. We have a Zumba, the Zumba, excuse me, summer session coming up beginning of July for West Orange Old Resort Programming. This flyer is on our website. For more information, you can contact Laura Van Dyke or Noelia Perez at nine seven three, three two five, four one oh six. They also have swim aerobics coming up. Again, this information is on our website. Council President also asked me to announce this. The EPA invites youth to serve on the agency's first ever National Environment Youth Advisory Council. You'd have to apply on the website and applications are due by August twenty-second, which of course is right around the corner. There are sixteen vacancies to be filled nationwide. So this information is up on our website. Any interested individuals can find this slide on our website and apply. Chief Fekio asked me to remind that as we begin travel season for the summer, to move over for emergency vehicles, which is something that I, I don't know why we have to have a slide for, but I've witnessed firsthand on, on the highways. Also, we have three new police officers that have joined the West Orange Police Force. They finished the Essex County Police Academy. And if I'm not mistaken, there's seven more officers coming out at the end of September. As always, you can contact the Township Council via email, all council members, council@westorange.org. And you can contact me, jayfagan@westorange.org for any information that you've seen here today. And Council President, I believe that that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan. Is there anyone in council chambers for a public comment this evening? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Paula Weinberg, Mount Pleasant Ave, West Orange. Thank you for giving me this time to address the town council, my fellow residents and friends of West Orange. Last meeting, there was a lot of talk about having an educational component to the new emerging legal adult sales of cannabis. Every town talks about it and I propose the city of innovation be the first to really do it. My company has been working for years in the cannabis space and one of the most important goals we have is to create a safe space for learning consisting of conversation workshops by credible experts. And we have a network of doctors, teachers, business owners and peers that will talk about cannabis, the positive and the negative. I have emailed the town council a brief outline of what we want to do in our town and how we believe it will lead to harm reduction. What would the past look like if when alcohol became mainstream, there was an education in every school about alcohol? Less alcoholics, less drunk drivers, less broken homes? We will never know. We can all agree that the Just Say No campaign did not work, especially when it comes to young people. Saying don't do it has never worked. A friend of mine just recently asked me advice when her twenty-two-year-old son came to her and said that he's been using cannabis. He has a car and a job and after a long day, that's how he relaxes. And so to make sure his parents didn't find out, he's been driving to a deserted spot in the reservation and smoking, then spraying his car down to hide his use. She herself has never used cannabis and was scared. So she asked me my advice and I said, he's been honest to you. So tell him he can smoke in your backyard. We don't want him on the road driving high. None of us want that. We need to be honest with our kids so they can be honest with us. Yes, sure. They can get all this information on the internet. But isn't that part of the problem? Having more people sit in front of screens without human connection, we just breed more addicts. I know a program of this, like this, would have really helped me make different choices when I was young and as a mother, mother of young girls. And I see them struggling every day. Harm reduction education also saves money. How much does it cost for an emergency visit to the hospital because you had an edible and something went wrong? What if you're at a party with your old friends and you've had two small glasses of wine? And you're having a great time. Then one of your college buddies offers you a joint and you think, I used to smoke in college. It's legal now. I'm not that old. I need to step out of my box. And you have one puff, coughing a lung out and get completely paranoid that everyone is looking at you. You're frozen clutching your arms to the lawn chair and the good time is over and you have to call your husband to come pick you up. Now, that's never happened to me, but we need to educate people about the real harm of mixing alcohol with weed. And one of my colleagues already runs a similar program in New York State. We want to get people in the community to speak about their experiences with cannabis. And we also are looking into partnering with maybe a local college or a healthcare institution. Having workshops on cultivation, budtending, manufacturing. The job opportunities are endless and the license holders could speak to the process they are going through. It's a billion-dollar industry and some of our residents may want to get involved. I propose that one of the spaces that you said no to the business of selling cannabis be used for a education center. I'm also a yoga teacher and would love to promote more yoga and meditation and exercise for the young people because that, we all know that helps with abuse. And we're also theater trained. And so we have worked in some schools, doing little things for kids actually respond so much better when they hear humor. So having an interesting way of kind of giving the message that they should wait before they try any substances is a really good way to go. And here's the best part, the cannabis businesses are going to pay for it, not us taxpayers. Giving some of the wealth coming from this industry to the residents. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Anyone in council chambers for a public comment? Okay, Mr. Fagan, how many people do we have on our Zoom audience?
Council President, there are sixty-two attendees and currently two people have their hand raised. The number is going up as we speak. First in the queue is Anthony Puglisi. Mr. Puglisi, thank you. Welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. This is Anthony Puglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFoncenzzo. Just a few things I want to keep you updated on. First of all, our summer concert series is continuing. We have three upcoming fireworks presentations. Tomorrow night's in Week Wake Park, Friday is in Branch Brook Park and Monday is in Brookdale Park. I just, if everyone's, if anyone is going to attend those events, they start at seven thirty. And I would just check our social media or our website for any weather updates. We did have to cancel a concert this evening because of the forecast of inclement weather. Also in July, we have Wellness on the Waterfront. This is programs every Monday to Thursday during July. There's yoga, there's a workout, there's movies and there's small concerts. They all start at six PM each night. And there's a, an event, like I said, Monday to Friday throughout July. Also in July, on Wednesday evenings is Zoovies or Movies at Turtleback Zoo. They're free. That does not include admission to the zoo. And the Zoovies are held on the third floor, the upper deck of the parking garage. So you can get a unique perspective over the zoo and enjoy the cooler weather in the evening watching a movie. Also during July and August, we have extended zoo hours on Wednesday and Thursday nights until eight o'clock. And then once again in July is our Buzz Fest at the Environmental Center. And that's for a, a two-week period. There's also a butterfly tent that is set up during that that you can walk through, similar to the exhibit that, that is at Turtleback Zoo. All this information is on our website, which is essexcountyNJ.org. And I just want to add that during the month, during the months of May and June, we have been visiting senior buildings throughout the county. The county, county executive wanted to continue his food emergency distribution program. And we did hit all of the, or we didn't hit, we visited all the senior buildings in West Orange. Seniors were given a box of food that had about forty meals in it. And hopefully we can continue this program going into the future, should funding permit. That's all I have. If you have any questions, I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Puglisi. For those of you who are joining in via Zoom, would like to ask that you please go ahead and raise your hand to get into the speaking queue. You don't have to wait until the person may have stopped speaking who currently has the floor. So if you are interested in commentary this evening and you're on the Zoom audience, please go ahead and raise your hand on the Zoom function so that you can be placed in the speaking queue. Thank you, Mr. Fagan.
Jennifer Sharrett, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Jennifer Sharrett, Howell Drive, West Orange. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. As some of you know, there is a proposed development for four-hundred-and-ninety-six units across four apartment buildings in the woods behind Howell Drive, Rosemont, Mayfair, Nestro and the Highlands. One of these buildings is too close to the steep slope and violates the town's amended steep slope ordinance. Many residents are concerned about this and wanted, just wanted to let people know that neighbors who are concerned have, are organizing a meeting at Essex County, I'm sorry, Essex Falls Country Club tomorrow evening, Wednesday, June twenty-eighth at six PM. People who live in the vicinity may have received a, a notice in the mail from organization that we are forming to hear concerns and see what we can all do collectively about this. That is called We Care NJ. The website is wecareNJ.com. So people are encouraged to look at that website. And if people would like to attend the meeting tomorrow evening, please do so. Also wanted to discuss another issue that relates to flooding, which is like one of the concerns we have with this proposed development. I know that at the last town council meeting, there was a proposed first reading of the floodplain ordinance. It's amending chapter twenty-five, section twenty-four of the Township Code. My understanding of this proposed ordinance is that the state through the DEP has told every town to adopt this. My understanding is our neighboring towns have adopted this as already as well. This was supposed to be heard at today's meeting, but there was some confusion about whether or not it had to be advertised. And I guess now it is going to be advertised and heard at the July eleventh town council meeting, which I think is critical since there is a deadline by the state and DEP for each town to adopt this. And I would hope that West Orange would ensure that it is in compliance with this and that everyone be subject to this. What I wanted to just ask is for the next meeting on July eleventh, since I understand that there may be new time constraints on the meetings. And I guess everyone will have to see how that plays out to make sure that this proposed ordinance on second reading be heard first on the agenda for next week. So, I'm not actually for July eleventh, so that there's no issue with this not being heard and the town somehow becoming non-compliant with this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Todd Dubovy, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Todd Dubovy and I'm at Ten Burnett Terrace. I wanted to talk about something we've been talking about for a while now, which is transparency and providing providing taxpayers with the information needed to be able to assess the decision-making that's taking place. And I think a good source to start with is the statement that And, um, I think, um, a good source to start with is the statement that, uh, Mayor McCartney released, um, uh, where she made some statements directed towards the council, uh, called them obstructionist, uh, suggested there's a shadow government and that's politically motivated. Um, I reject both of those statements. Uh, all the taxpayers want in this township is to understand what's going on, have the facts, um, have the information that is being considered, uh, when making decisions. Um, in addition, she makes the statement that the council needs to work collaboratively with the administration. I do agree with that one. Um, but I think where, where things are, are falling apart is that the administration doesn't produce the information needed to be able to understand where they're coming from. For years, now that I've been coming to these, uh, council meetings, um, and paying attention a little bit, um, for years, we've been asking for information. One of those things is an income and expense statement for Rock Spring Golf Course. Still don't have one. We had an abbreviated one that was presented, uh, by Richard Trank at the Rock Spring, um, golf course presentation. That would have been an ideal place to produce an income, a complete income and expense statement to show the township what, what the financial performance of the golf course is. Um, I've recently Oprah'd, uh, for, for an expense, income and expense statement, so hopefully I'll be able to get that. But the reality is, why do we have to Oprah for that? Why do we have to, uh, you know, you should be providing, you meaning the administration, should be providing the council with the information that is needed. Um, and that's not been happening for years now. And this is just a continuation of that. And, you know, it, it's, it's, it's bad form. You know, to, to, to go back to, uh, the, those presentations, not only are we not getting the information, we're getting incorrect information, misleading information. Um, point, uh, the, one point to make is that, um, during Richard Trank's statements, he basically said he transferred all of the risk to Kemper, uh, by virtue of, uh, the agreement with them to run the golf course. If that was the case, then why do we have a one point three million dollar loss? Um, if there's a loss, then we have risk, and I think one point three million dollars is a pretty big risk.
Mr. Dubovy, are you there?
Yes, I am. I apologize, getting my thoughts together here. Um, in addition to the, the Rock Spring, um, I, I don't know that this has been brought up, but, um, our recycling center is operated by a third-party, Reliable Wood Products. Um, and they've been there for, I guess, this is their second five-year term. Uh, term started in March of two thousand nineteen, it goes until February, end of February, two thousand twenty-four. Um, when the, when Reliable Wood Products first came at, uh, came to the site, they were paying us about a hundred thousand dollars a year in rent. Um, that was then reduced to fifty thousand dollars. And then my records seem to indicate that after Sandy, the rent was waived completely.
Thank you, Mr. Dubovy. Mr. Fagan?
Jessica Torres, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Council President and Council Members. My name is Jessica Torres, and, uh, I'm on Park Terrace. So I just have an observation, uh, which concerned me. Over the weekend, I went by the substation on Washington Street, and they were closed. I'm not sure if this is something new or if this is something that, uh, is ongoing. Perhaps they closed during certain hours. I do believe, though, that if that is the case, it should have been, um, shared with the residents, uh, especially in the vicinity. Uh, the reason that I went there is because I caught on my cameras, uh, an individual during the night hours, um, attempting to open car doors on my street. Um, and of course, I saw that the next day, and so when I went to voice my concern, I was unable to. Um, so I think that that's, you know, with the increase in car thefts and so forth, that that closing of the substation, um, you know, is, is concerning, right? You want to be able to walk in and, and have a conversation with the officers, um, on an, on an, on a weekend. But also too, during the week, God forbid, something happens, there's a crime committed. If a, a local resident, you know, can't call in and they're at the substation or, or close by, um, and they're closed, you know, it, it doesn't offer much feeling of safety. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Phil Litwinoff, uh, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Phil Litwinoff. I live on London Avenue here in West Orange. Um, on June twenty-first, the West Orange Patch posted an article stating with the title, "West Orange Mayor Issues Order in Wake of Marathon Council Meetings." I'm grateful that the, uh, an independent publication elected to post that out for people to read since the township didn't think it's important enough to make a notification like that to the taxpayers of this town. Uh, I object vehemently to the mayor's unilateral decision to stand in the way of democratic process within this township. Now, I will admit that I think that the meeting, the town council meetings are going on way too long and that there are ways that it could be shortened. You know, perhaps one being, whereas each town, uh, each person who speaks has a five-minute limit, limit, the five-minute limit, then each council, uh, council member should have, be limited to five minutes as well. It's nice to hear your name acknowledged, but it's really not critical. What's critical is that you, as our town council, act based on what is being said. However, having said that, the mayor has no legal right to put a constraint on the ability for the town council to operate, especially when your schedule is padded with all sorts of nonsense, such as dealing with, uh, shopping cart violations. There are many more important things that we have to deal with in this town. And I think that that's where you need to, to spend your time. But I do honestly believe that the mayor has overstipped her privilege. And maybe, and I'll say this in my own opinion, is that maybe everything she's doing is being advised by the township attorney, Richard Trank, and maybe she has an allegiance since she hired his son to be her campaign manager and doesn't want to upset that relationship, but that's not fair to the taxpayers of this town. And I challenge and I charge each one of you on the town council to act accordingly for the best interests of the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Litwinoff.
Sheila Wettlesgus, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Oh. How did you get online?
Let, let's keep moving, Mr. Fagan, please. Thank you.
Any member of the public wishing to, uh, address the town council, please raise your hand. Uh, Council President, I just want to take a picture of the screen. Uh, there are no other hands raised.
Thank you.
Oh, one just came up.
Okay, great.
Joyce Rudin, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening, it's Joyce Rudin, Woodland Avenue. I just want to add to the, um, discussion of a few things. Number one, I strongly support the police, uh, objections to firework. Um, I object for possibly a different reason. It is absolutely terrifying to my pet and to many other people who have pets. It's also awful for the animals that live outside. It is, uh, love pollutant. We don't need that. We've already witnessed enough, um, smoke filled in our skies. And actually tomorrow, there's going to be, it's, in New York City, it's supposed to be a very bad day again due to fires coming down and hitting our region. So I do support, and also because our budget is so constrained, I think that this is a waste of taxpayer money. Along with the issue of talking about wasting taxpayer money, um, I, I want to echo what an earlier speaker said about the fact that we are paying so much money to get information that should be, um, accessible and easily available. I asked one question to somebody in, um, at, at Town Hall. I'm referred to a second, and then the second refers me to a third. Um, so why are we wasting our employees' time? Can't we just get simple answers? I asked a question about why Mr. Deng Denglero, I, I guess that's how you say it, is all of the legal information is still coming from that office. That office is, um, under Mr. Trank's, um, uh, private firm. I thought that the council via, by a vote, um, three to two, did not, uh, um, authorize any spending from Mr. Trank's firm. Why, why is that firm still working to put forth, um, our legal, um, resolutions? Uh, another thing I had to Oprah was how much, um, how much money it costs for the mayor to send out a personal and targeted email to residents to lobby for a bond issue that she was in favor of, even though that bond was taken off the agenda. I got a response that one thousand five hundred and forty-seven letters went out. That went out through the mail, somebody printed that, paper was used, postage was used, administrative fees were used. Um, I think that is an overstepping of power to use taxpayer money in that way. If she wants to send a message, come speak about it, come lobby for it, do it publicly, not in a private way that uses our taxpayer money. I also want to add my, uh, sentiments that, that it is not the business of the mayor to legislate when council, um, can have its hours. Again, the, the meetings are long, they're filled with a lot of stuff that is unnecessary, and it is the business of the council, and I believe, uh, Mr., uh, Councilman Rutherford, uh, raised that issue at the prior meeting that the council's not a mayor's edict. So I'm interested to see what is going to happen tonight and whether, whether or not the council can control its own, uh, discussion, debate, um, and resolution. That's all for tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sherille Raymond, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Sherille Raymond, Seven Alf Road. I have just a couple of questions. I know that, are we working tonight towards this eleven PM meeting end that the mayor stated? I'm not sure. I, somebody could just answer that for me, so I set my expectations. Um, also, if somebody can just clarify, because I lose track in these meetings, what John Gross's job is now, that would be great. So I am absolutely clear. And, uh, I haven't seen Chief Abbott actually show up in the past few meetings that, you know, I know there was someone else there the last meeting, someone else here again, unless I missed and that was Chief Abbott, but I don't think so. Um, is he not supposed to show up as Chief Abbott? As well, I'm also concerned that the majority of time that's spent in these meetings tonight, not so many people are speaking up in the public comment, but when we then go to the town council responses, they are extremely long. And then the bigger arguments that keep coming up are around the town attorney. When do you guys plan to stop wasting time in these meetings fighting over whether Trank should even be there because they're not agreeing, you know, Rutherford, Scarpa, Esmerette? They won't pay the bills. You guys, the other side won't put out an RFQ. So we just sit here as the town, listening to you guys go back and forth. This needs to be settled. Because, you know, as Catalina likes to say, we need to get the people's business done, right? I'm the people. And I also don't know who's giving Susan the advice to post her statements on Facebook. I just didn't find posting what she came and said at the last meeting very appropriate. And I know, you know, I just think it's a bad look for the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond.
Council President, there are no hands raised currently, and I just want to take a picture.
Thank you. Yes, please.
There are no, oh, I'm sorry, on the Zoom audience.
Thank you, Council President, for allowing me to speak. Uh, good evening, Claire Silvestri, Twenty Grand View Avenue. I have a few questions and comments about the two thousand twenty-three budget as it now stands. I applaud most of the council members who have spent an incredible amount of time, both inside and out of this council chambers, combing through the monstrosity presented by this administration and looking for ways to markedly reduce the proposed cost of our government while also preserving quality of life. I regret that the council didn't stick to the suggestion of one member at the outset of the hearings to ask all the department heads to make their recommendations on how to reduce their budgets by a flat ten percent. But unfortunately, this council has been hamstrung by the decisions of previous councils and administrations to make multimillion-dollar purchases of private property that have put the township ultimately into a hundred and fifty-five million dollars in debt and saddle taxpayers with debt service of nine point one million dollars just in two thousand twenty-three. Buying this property both takes revenue from the tax rolls and adds to our debt service, twenty million dollars for the downtown redevelopment properties that many of us warned against, plus another eleven million dollars more for Rock Spring. I hear you have an interested party to develop the movie studio product, project downtown with a change in the film industry tax credit legislation. Getting these properties off our back and into private hands, I believe would get close to a million dollars off our debt service and restore a significant amount, I think approximately eight hundred thousand dollars of annual tax revenue back on the rolls. Also, I'd strongly advise, as a number of other residents have already recommended, that the town seriously consider selling Rock Spring and enter negotiations with the county to work a deal that's advantageous to West Orange residents, including deed restrictions that would keep the entire property open space and get that debt service off our backs. And to the argument that we get, we get no tax revenue by selling it to the county, I'll remind you that for the last five years, we haven't received any tax revenue on Rock Spring. In fact, we've been pouring tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars into that property with more and with more on the way, much more than we've ta- ever taken in. So for some time now, our municipal budget has adjusted to the lack of tax revenue from that parcel. In addition, I have some questions about the sewer fees. Um, I wasn't quite clear after the last budget hearing where that stands, but I share the concerns of Councilwoman Williams that a major increase in the sewer fees, in some cases up to two hundred dollars or more per property, roughly a fifty percent increase, will have a similar impact on residents as a double-digit municipal tax increase. The budget indicates the township collected seven point one million dollars in sewer fees in two thousand twenty-two and paid out three point three million to the joint meeting, our regional sewer commission. Now for two thousand twenty-three, Mr. Gross is recommending the town increase sewer fees to collect two point four million dollars more than last year. Well, it seems the joint meeting is actually reducing our assessment to three point two million. In two thousand twenty-two, where was that nearly four million dollar windfall over our joint meeting assessment spent? If it was spent by the DPW on sewer repairs and maintenance, can Mr. Gross share with us which exact projects and the amount it was, they were spent on? And could he please direct us to the budget line items where the six million dollars over and above the two thousand twenty-three allocation to the joint meeting is proposed to be spent on this year? I'd strongly suggest before the council votes to approve the significant increases in the sewer fees, I'd strongly suggest before the council votes to approve the significant increases in the sewer fees. That you get a detailed breakdown of where these millions of dollars are going. What's the difference whether we pay in higher taxes or ballooned fees? So on a separate note, I just want to remind council members that you are fully in charge of council meetings. And urge you not to be intimidated by the mayor's rhetoric. It's the administration that loads up your agenda to its enormous size at each meeting. With this ridiculous process of changing the entire municipal code, raising fees. Add that to the list of the bad legal advice you receive from the current legal department. I don't think it's a bad idea to end the meetings at eleven, but it should be up to you to make that determination. It's my understanding that any one of the council members can make a motion from the floor to adjourn. At any time with a second and a simple majority, you can determine your own destiny. Please continue to take charge of these meetings and keep the focus on what's in the best interest of West Orange. It, as your mi- main priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Uh huh, Ms. Morelli.
I'm going to start again with what I always say. I didn't intend to speak tonight, but anyhow, I think I have to. Um. I've been thinking about what I read, the mayor closing up the town hall certain hours and not allowing the public into the building. Which is our building, which we pay for and has to be open for us. I don't know if it's illegal or whatever, but that shouldn't be happening. People want to come here. It's our home. We come in, we're free to come in, we're free to speak. That's what a democracy is all about. You don't put restrictions on the taxpayers. So I don't know where she's coming from with this, but. If my memory serves me well, several years back, Union, a township in Union County. Did something like that. They closed up the building. Well, those people, we wish we can do it, got disgusted and got a battering rim. I don't know if you know what that is, but it was like a half a tree trunk. And they threatened to knock the doors down. They had all the police out there. It was a big issue. So the mayor pulled back on it. Could happen here. You can't deny us the right and tell us that we can come in here certain hours. This is our building. We pay for it to be here and we have the right to be here. When the town's business is being discussed. Just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morelli. Public comment is now closed.
Just give me a moment and I will respond. So thank you to those residents who um spoke. Those on the Zoom audience, uh, we appreciate your commentary as well. And your participation in this evening's meeting. Um, thank you for making us aware. Uh, for those who may not have uh known about the S X Fails Country Club meeting tomorrow evening at six o'clock. That will be at the country club and it is uh all interested parties, a combined meeting for Verona, S X Fails and West Orange. Mr. Devolvi, Devolvi, I will give the administration an opportunity to respond about an income statement at Rock Spring. Um, we'll save those comments from the administration at the end of my colleagues' comments. Um, thank you to those who are recognizing that certainly um having our meetings um. Well into the mornings is not sustainable. I'm not certain um. About what the rights and privileges um of the mayor are or are not. Um, I will certainly yield to our legal department uh to give us clarity on what she can and cannot do. Um, certainly the fireworks will be discussed. Um, so thank you for those who made commentary on the fireworks. Uh, Ms. Torres, I will also uh give our administration and or our deputy chief. An opportunity to respond on the substation at Washington Street, what the hours of operation is. And why it may have been closed um without your knowledge. Uh, Ms. Raymond, again, John Gross's role, um, I will give him an opportunity to directly respond. Uh, Chief Abbott at the meeting, certainly the administration can respond. And uh certainly I do hope that the township attorney fighting um can be settled at some point. Um, thank you for your suggestions on how we can continue um to minimize our financial obligations. Um, but the increase of sewer fees and or the other fees for the municipality is indeed our responsibility. Um, as a body, as an elected body, as the legislative body. It is our responsibility and role to make sure we do balance our municipal budget. And without increasing those fees, we will certainly have and has already been articulated to us. The options that we have uh this year to be able to present a balanced budget. It was increasing fees, terminating employees. Um. And certainly all of us have indicated that we did not want to terminate employees. So thank you so very much. I will ask that my colleagues again uh minimize their comments. We do not have to reply to every individual and we do have a tremendous amount of business on our agenda. So if you can respond collectively, um, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you. Councilwoman Scarborough.
Uh, yes, Paula Weinberg, thank you so much for the email and for your advocacy and your intentions to um provide education to us. Um, it's my professional opinion that uh the best, that education would best be presented by medical professionals. And I think our school usually does a pretty good job in the health programs doing that, and I hope that they will do a thorough job there. Um, Jennifer Charette, I want to thank you. I, two eight oh five dash twenty-five, the adoption of the flood plan. Was pulled. I had planned to ask the in, the administration why it was pulled. If it is time sensitive, what that date is, where we need to respond to the state. And if it does need to go to the planning board. My understanding is this would need to go to the planning board. So I don't know if that's the case and maybe, you know, Mr. Gross could just talk a little bit about that. Um, but I do want to, I do share your concerns about the flood plan and I think we do need to adopt it in accordance with the deadlines. Uh, Todd Devoby, thank you so much for all of your comments on transparency. Um, again, they're well taken. I have, I completely agree with you. That it oftentimes can be difficult to get the information that I need to get the job done. Um, I have, I have in the past asked for information, particularly on that six million dollar bond fund. That was rather controversial and on the work that is being done on the street repairs. It had been my experience when I requested it from engineering. That when I got there to pick up the information that was put together for me, they said that I had to Oprah it. Well, as a town councilwoman, I was shocked that they would tell me that I had to Oprah. That information that had been prepared to me by Mrs. Cabala. So I did resolve that. I had to email our administration, ask for the information several times. Unfortunately, sometimes it's difficult to get all the information that you need completely. And that is a problem going forward that I hope we will all be able to work more collaboratively together. To get us a better understanding, particularly in the financial picture.
A little closer to your mic.
Especially the financial picture of our town. And I do um agree that we need those income statements and expense statements on Rock Spring. Um, it's very, very important that we understand that and start to move forward. Both that and on this, the downtown properties. Because as um Mrs. Silvestri has pointed out, those two acquisitions. Are very, very um responsible for the financial picture that we find ourselves in. And until we resolve those two major strategic problems, structural problems. Of our budget, we're going nowhere fast in terms of really reducing the problem. So thank you very much, Ms. Silvestri. Um, the recycling center, that is another area that needs to be looked at very carefully and thank you for your attention to that. We have had um a lot of different things going on there over the years that are questionable. With the changing of the terms, perhaps Mr. Gross can speak to that a little bit. I do believe that that should be a revenue generator for us. And uh, we are not recouping the monies that we need to from that project. Um, Jessica Flores, um, I will leave it to our police uh to talk about the substation. I'm not sure what the hours of operation are and why it's not open. Phil Littonoff, as usual, your comments are right on the money. And I agree with all of them. Joyce Rudin, thank you too for bringing up the questions. About uh Mr. Trank's firm, about the Oprah, the difficulty we all seem to have when we make an Oprah request. Getting the information we need and um I hope that they can be addressed. Um, this is Cheryl also. Thank you for uh all of your concerns. And I hope that Mr. Gross will discuss his job responsibilities for you. And um we can move forward and Chief Abbott, I think. Maybe our police could talk about where he is. He has been here and I, I think he comes when he can. Um, and this is Morelli. Again, thank you for all of your comments. You're always a breath of fresh air when you remind us that this is the people's house. Sometimes it takes our elders to just be the voice of reason. And I want to thank you because I believe you are right on the money and most of us do agree with you. That's about all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you to everyone that commented tonight. As always, Mr. Fagan and Mr. Pagliisi, we do appreciate. Uh, your timely uh announcements. Um, there were several um issues raised. Cannabis education, um, Ms. Weinberg, we certainly are a serious about making sure that there's a real component. Executed or implemented in town that helps with that. So your, your, your comments are spot on. I'm looking forward to further conversation about that. I don't know exactly how that will shape up. Um, but there is a requirement on each of these license holders uh to support that kind of initiative. Um, with regard to West Essex Highlands, uh, it is certainly an important issue. Um, and I hope the community will come out tomorrow night. Thank you, uh, Jennifer Charette uh for announcing that tonight. Uh, I plan to be there. I have a minor conflict I think I can work out, but uh even if I don't, I'll, I'll still be there. I'll just be there late. Um, I share my council colleagues' sentiments with regard to the flood plan, flood plain ordinance. Um, I thought we were under some time constraints. I'm sure Mr. Smaraldo can give us an update on that. Um, I don't know if the council president wants to do that now. You want to do that later?
We'll do that later. Thank you.
Uh, with regard to the police substation that's been addressed, uh, with regard to the um mayor. Determining to close municipal buildings at eleven o'clock. Um, in addition to that just being poor form. I think it's just an example of how toxic our politics are now. I'm deeply disappointed by that. Um, I can assure those that have um commented so far that I won't be intimidated by that. This is the people's building and this is the council's meeting. Um, and so we're going to have to do our business. I, I know the mayor has given some instruction to police and to um. Mr. Fagan and to others. Um, this is a council meeting. We have to pay the bills. Uh, I encourage you to disregard that. Um, should we have to go beyond eleven, which none of us want to do? Um, it is because we have to do the business. Um, and so that, that will just have to suffice for that. But in, in addition to that, I think um. I, I think I've said it multiple times. I don't know uh if we'll ever get there. But um, we need a reset. There are some things that the council majority has expressed uh via proper votes. And if there are issues with those things, then there is a, a mechanism, a protocol for addressing that. To just try to stifle or to um. Bully the council into doing certain things and to threaten uh certain negative outcomes. If the council doesn't do what some want, I think is the wrong way to go. I think it's not going to get the desired outcome. Um, so um, you know, we absolutely discussed this issue last meeting. Uh, I do believe, Council President, um, uh, at the end of the meeting, you allowed in new business. Um, a discussion about limiting our meetings to eleven. There have been private conversations amongst us. I think that was one of the few things all five of us agreed on. Um, and then to see that, that note by the mayor, I thought was just um very disappointing. Uh, and I'm not going to pay it any mind. Um, with regard to uh Mr. Gross, that's already been addressed. I'm sure he will give his answer. Uh, I do agree that the council needs to stop fighting over Mr. Trink. We've made our will known. We've taken votes. We are in a process. I know some wanted to move uh at a different pace. Um, it's going to go at a pace that I and others um determine in our own individual interest. Uh, is appropriate for the magnitude of this movement. Um, we're not taking it lightly and there's a whole lot of due diligence that has to go, uh, that has to happen before we present these charges. Um, but to have Mr. Trink continuing to operate as if none of this is happening is again disappointing. And I think it is part of the toxic politics in town. Um, with regard to Rock Springs, certainly uh the income expense statement portion has been addressed. Uh, but with regard to selling it, um, if we were to sell it now, we would probably lose. We would lose at least five million um on that sale. No one's going to pay us the eleven million we paid for it unless we agree to let them develop it. For housing, which there is no appetite for that uh in town or on the council. Um, so to sell it, it would be valued as a, at a golf course or as a golf course. And that pri- price, uh, the last appraisal for a Rock Spring was around four million. Um, the offer to purchase from the county was at six. I doubt our county exec would be willing to uh go above that number, which would mean we would lose five million dollars. And have no additional revenue going forward. Uh, that's not something I'm comfortable with, especially since we can uh develop that property. Get uh at least that same amount back from Green Acres money. And my urging, um, both from as a council member and as a uh the liaison to the Economic Development Committee. Uh, and my colleagues have done it as well. We are urging this uh administration to. Uh, apply for Green Acres money for, for Rock Spring by the March deadline. So that we can get in the queue and begin to receive the payments back uh for preserving that land. Uh, I think that's the best way to go. It allows us revenue share from the property that can be developed. And it allows us the Green Acres money from the state. Um, I think. I think that's it for me. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to those here in person, online. Um. Thank you for speaking out tonight and for being here and listening. Um, I echo Councilman Rutherford's sentiments. I'm going to keep my comments brief um and wait until we get to the resolutions to discuss most of this stuff. Um. Regarding Mayor McCartney, I will make a statement. While I do not believe that the mayor's executive order is enforceable, legal or binding. I believe that it has been entered under false pretenses. The reality is that while the mayor claims to want to adjourn meetings early in the interest of transparency. I believe the true goal is to stop the deliberation, which is desperately needed in light of the poor decisions. And questionable legal advice has been made by this administration and the legal department. Nonetheless, I agree that having the public become aware of what is taking place in these deliberations is beneficial to the public. As such, I believe that if council meetings were to begin earlier, it would provide the public more information without cutting these meetings. So I suggest that the council meetings be held at an earlier time, either five or five thirty P M. For all regular future meetings for the balance of the year. And hopefully this is something that we can discuss in new business. Um, it's not her role. She's the executive branch. We're the legislative branch. So she has no say in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Council President. So thank you, everyone, for coming in this evening and uh for being on Zoom. I want to thank Mr. Fagan for all, you know, his historical role and to remember all our history. I think it's important that we go back and see how we got here sometimes. So thank you for that. And Mr. Pagliisi. Ms. Sharrett, thank you for the meeting for tomorrow night. I know you've been diligent in getting some information together. I, I know we complied with an Oprah request and and I know the township engineer was out and that, that was your delay for that. But I know you have all your information and, and thank you for your advocacy. It is important, West Essex Highlands, I mean, that's been ongoing for many years now. And yeah, it, it is nerve wracking to see what will finally get built there. And we're just going to keep trying to, I mean, there was a court settlement, Supreme Court settlement on that. But it's important that all the residents come out to that meeting. So thank you for bringing that up this evening. Uh, let's see, I know administration's going to respond to a few things and I'm glad they will. Ms. Torres, the substation, yeah, it does have various hours. I'm curious to see what the hours are. Currently, I know it's Mandon who's on staff, but you always should go to 60, what are you, 66 Main Street next door or 60, 60 Main Street to, to the police department? And call right away. So don't, I wouldn't go, I'll let the, you know, administration answer. But I know the substation hours on the weekends, they're not, they are not always there. And you should always go to the main police department. But I know there is patrolling in the neighborhood because I've seen it myself. I don't live far from you. And hopefully our officers will respond later, later on tonight. Let's see what order I want to go in here. So as far as us getting information, we do get reports and administration will respond on Rock Spring monthly on phone Kemper, the Kemper report. So I, I know the council doesn't get that because I see my reports. And I also know we get reports for the recycling center. So we are getting that information monthly. And maybe administration could go over if it is missed time to time, but I recall pretty much seeing it on a monthly basis. And if you need assistance in going through the information, maybe they could do that for you. But we do get our information. Also, Ms. Carnaval is here for the council. So any request should always go through Ms. Carnaval. We're always copied on a lot of stuff that everybody submits. So I don't see all that correspondence all the time. But I know Ms. Carnaval is very responsive. We're sometimes the directors may be busy, so information should go to her. Disappointed that a director or, I don't think it was the director, but I think one of our employees may not know. So if the directive could go out, that they know that council people should get the information that they request. So we clear up any discrepancies that are out there. Ms. Weinberg, thank you for coming in and for wanting to educate our public. And as my colleague mentioned, as regards to the schools, the schools obviously would be in charge of what they need to be charged of. I didn't get to have my liaison report earlier. I did meet last week on Zoom with our superintendent and two of our school board members. I have to be honest with you, are not so happy with our ordinance and, and locations of some of the, the, some of the new locations. They have not been given a notice in the past. And I made sure Ms. Carnaval with this new location on Washington Street, they were given that application. And now there's a mechanism in place. They had the interim superintendent, so I don't know what went, what went wrong there. But I know on our end, they, they, the school board did not get the information. So they were a little disappointed there, but they do have time to make comments and send them to the, to the planning board. So that is their right. And they're also concerned with students and other members of the community walking through the school properties and, and carrying cannabis on them. And again, this is an education process for folks to know and realize that they, you know, that in our schools that is not allowed and in our parks. So it's a big campaign. It's something that we'll keep working on together. I appreciate your efforts in that. Also with the state of New Jersey passing this, I asked Mr. Moore to see if the state will be passing information down to the, their health departments. Because, you know, it's, the state did approve this and they should be just like they go over alcohol and whatnot. So we're, we're looking forward to see what comes from the state level. As far as the time goes, last meeting went to 3:30, 3 o'clock in the morning. You come home, you, you wind down. It's, you have to go to sleep after 4:00 a.m. And I know the mayor, again, I didn't read her message that went out, but I also know we were talking about it and I was with the mayor with my colleague when she had asked if, if she was going to present that at 11 a.m., 11 p.m. And we, we said we would be supportive of that because it is a late hour. It doesn't mean that we have to shut down, but these meetings have been running late. And I know the mayor was concerned about the staff and the rest of us. You know, we choose this. We got elected for this, but none of us would ever think would be there up so late in the evening hours. And I know I'm not making, I, as far as decision making, I know I've been cranky. You see all of us as the evening gets later, we are not as pleasant and chipper as we are now. And yeah, so yeah, statement had to get done. That doesn't mean we don't want folks to come in. We don't want folks to present themselves to us. Of course we do. But, you know, we, we've got to be, we, we've got to be mindful of, of the time. So in, in that respect, I, I will shorten this up. I know I speak a little longer than I like to. Sometimes there's some information out there. I don't want to call it misinformation, but maybe sometimes confusion of some facts that's, you know, traveling in the community. And I like to set it straight now. So folks realize, you know, information that's out there sometimes always isn't accurate. In regards to Sprock's Rock Spring, for example, the council was in receipt of the council at that time. I was the only one here that approved that. And we did have an appraisal for $14 million that property was appraised for. Because there was a developer looking for that property. Would I, you know, if we were to sell it today, we'd probably have to sell it, as my colleague said, for a few million more. And we bought it for, I believe, around 12 and we would have to sell it for 15. But even if the county was willing to buy it from us for $15 million, which I don't think they would be interested in, we also lose site control. Not to say that the county wouldn't do something grand there and beautiful, because I know they will. I'm the biggest fan of all the county properties. But that golf course area is so challenging because the way it's embedded in the residential neighborhoods, there's multiple neighborhoods and it's like moving mortar. If you, if you move something here, you, you know, you're affecting something there. And what we recently found out is we're even where we thought we could maybe build a road up to Rock Spring off Northfield Avenue, there are springs running underneath there. So that's another challenge that we have. So there's multiple challenges. It's, these are complex issues. And, and it's not that we don't want to do green acres, but it, we have to agree to something that will work. And again, we're all not afraid of challenges. And, and I have full faith in my colleagues that although it seems to times we don't work well together, I think we could surprise you over this summer. In regards to the township attorney, again, charges have to be made, but right now the township attorney, even though a resolution was passed of no confidence, the, our, our assistant township attorney, Mr. Kaser, I would like for him to explain the status of that and where we are. And I think I covered everything I wanted to state. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. And thank you, Council President.
No problem. Mr. Gross, I'm going to always pass to you with some of the questions from the public as well as commentary requests or responses from my colleagues. So we discussed briefly income expense statements on Rock Spring. If you could give the public as well as us an update on how those income expense statements are generated, where they are available, any updates you may be able to provide.
Sure, certainly. We, we get expense statements every month. They are distributed to the council. They are available to the public. Let me talk a little bit about Oprah requests. We do an awful lot with Oprah requests. And in fact, we're, we're quite, we, we provide a quite a bit of information online. And, and when we do provide, we, we provide as thorough amount of information as we possibly can. And so if any member of the public wants something like that, it's a simple email to the clerk's office for request. And we will produce it. We will provide it for you. We provide an awful lot. We spend an awful lot of money on, on dealing with Oprah requests. We do it in a pretty efficient way. And so if you, any member of the public is, is looking for anything, any information, any, any documents that we have, please do send in those requests and we will address it.
Thank you. And we also had a question on the, I'll come back to the substation on Washington Street. And the recycling report.
I'm sorry?
Recycling report.
Recycling. I mean, we, we'd love to, to get more revenue from, from, from that project. And, and our next go around, we are already working on the next RFP, request for proposal to, to look at and investigate other alternatives. But I think that what we have to keep in mind is actually, I think this is the third five-year term of this contract. These are publicly bid contracts. And so while we'd like to be able to dictate and say, well, you've got to do this and you've got to do that. You have to give us this and you have to give us that. Back to the matter is, it's a, a contract, it's a, a contract process that is designated through a, a, a RFP bid process. It's open, competitive. There are not a lot of companies in this business or there haven't been in the past. We hope to try to generate more. But we don't dictate how much they're going to pay us. They, they, the, the market does that through the RFP process. And so we agree with everyone that we'd like to see more money out of these projects. But we're going to see how that works out. And we'll try to do the best we can to try to generate interest in these contracts and to generate people who are interested in paying more. But again, that's part of the commercial, the, the open process.
Councilwoman?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add too, because Mr. DeBowie had mentioned how we dipped down one, I guess maybe the second contract. And that was due to after Superstorm Sandy and the other storms we had. If I recall correctly, they took our materials, all the debris. And we actually owed them for a lot of the, the cleanup, if I recall that correctly.
There, there are some moving parts there. In, in, in our contract, only calls for them to collect certain amounts. They're limited to normal situations. So when we, we, we have unusual weather events, that, that does and can trigger additional costs for us. But the rents themselves went down, frankly, not because of that, but because of the competitive process. You know, whatever expenses they hit or whatever they, that they had in their, the, during the previous contract, they made an evaluation of how much they could afford to pay in rent. Again, we're limited if, if they're to, to the, the bids that we get and with the limitations of the bidders that they put in that. So it's, having said that, having said that, while we certainly would like more money out of the contracts, we certainly want to make sure that we maintain the service. For us to run it, we're talking hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars that it would cost the taxpayers if we were to take it over and run it. So we want to make sure that we keep contracts attractive enough to, to, to get bidders as well. So it, it is a, a certain amount of ying and yang on that. We, we, we've got to be careful about what we ask to make sure that we, we, we hit the market and are able to, to get somebody to do the operation.
Thank you. And there was also a statement about a loss of $1.3 million at Rock Spring, if you can speak to that.
I don't know that, that there's a lot. Rock Spring, there, there is, there are costs in terms of long-term and short-term costs. We, we, we get short-term revenues. Last year, we got about a little, a little less than a half a million dollars in revenue. Having said that, there are capital costs that we, it's an asset that, that we have to maintain certain aspects, aspects of it. The day-to-day operations are maintained by Kemper. But in terms of maintaining our asset, just like this building or any other asset that we have, we have obligations. And, you know, over time, they will cost us a significant amount of money. No question about it.
Then we also wanted to clarify your role. So if you could speak to that?
I'm the, I'm the township's chief financial officer. And like many municipal employees, I, we, we all do have multiple roles. The mayor recently asked me to serve as her chief of staff. And so I'm, I'm doing that as well.
And there was a question regarding the sewer fees, the increase that is proposed and the use of the $2.4 million in more funds. Where would those funds be directed? And how will the money be spent this year?
I mean, look, the, the town has been subsidizing, has been subsidizing the sewer system for the, you know, the tax, the general taxpayers have been paying for the use of the sewer system by the users. Conceptually, what we're trying to do is, and what we've been trying to do, quite frankly, in, in, over the last 10 years, is get to a point to where the, the sewer users themselves support the cost of maintenance, improvements and the amortized cost of building the system. And so we're, we, we, we're doing that. Our, our proposal this year gets us close to that. Quite frankly, doesn't get it to 100%, but it gets us close to it. And we will continue to look at that.
So there is some assumption that the sewer fees that we charge are not covering the cost or not going to the joint meetings? Can you clarify?
A lot of costs.
Okay.
You have, you have, you, you know, let's, let's, you have the cost of, of treatment. You have the, the day-to-day cost of maintaining the sewers and cleaning the sewers and, and taking care of sewer breaks. You have the, the cost of building the sewer over all these years that our taxpayers have paid for in advance. And that, that, that what we're looking for is moving forward is to have the users use it. You know, you have a system. They have users and taxpayers. Taxpayers, pretty well defined. We know who the taxpayers are. Users are some taxpayers and also non-taxpayers. And they're also the, 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 in terms of the, the volume of use is distributed differently than, than based on taxpayers. Taxpayers are based on the value of your property. The sewer system is, is used is based on how much you're actually passing through. And different levels of, of users have different usage of that. So what we're trying to do is to make, is to take the load off of the taxpayer and put it onto the users as a whole. And the, and then distribute the cost of the users to those users that are that are higher cost to those that are using it at a, at a higher rate than those that are, that are not. And so this year's structure, we're, we're looking to actually, actually change it this year. And then I, in the next year, looking at, at other potential changes that may be more equitable, even more equitable. But right now, we're, we're, what, what's being proposed here this evening is, is, is a, a concept where as your, your commercial users pay it based on the commercial rate, based on, on what their uses are, how, you know, what volume of use it is. And then residential is paid based on the number of bedrooms in a home or in, in a unit in order to try to give some relief to high users versus lower users.
Councilwoman?
So I have two questions because I've had quite a few residents reach out to me concerned about the increase. I'm sure my other council colleagues also have. So. So a couple of asks, is it legal to increase the fees the way it's proposed?
Just, I'll I'll give you an example. We can sell the system, right? We can, we can, we can market the system, and we can sell it. And if we did that, we would get the money because it's our asset, and that would go to the taxpayers. Then whoever we sold it to, or whatever we, whatever amount we sold, would then come up with a cost of maintaining, which would include the cost, the value of the system at that point in time. And that 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 formula would come up to a usage charge for those years. It's not much, we're not selling the system, but we're amortizing it in much the same way as that would occur. So to the extent that this is legal, I believe it absolutely is. It's not just me. Towns has been doing this all over the country and, you know, certainly in the state.
Thank you for explaining. Second question, residents have mentioned. Why can't we go towards a usage model versus doing it this way for next year? Why can't we have American Water? No, this year, you said it's too late. You said that the American Water wouldn't get to you.
I I think I mentioned that we're looking, I think I just mentioned that, and and we we certainly talked about it. Is is we're we're investigating now about possibly using the water model next year. I will only caution, is we don't know what that will look like. So I certainly am not prepared here to say, okay, we're definitely going to do that, because I don't know what what the outcome of that would be. And and so therefore, I can advise you as to as as to whether it, what what goals it would meet, what goals it wouldn't meet. It is certainly something that we're looking at and looking to do if if it's advantageous.
And since our budget meeting, the American Water Company hasn't gone back to varting usage?
I don't, I I do not have it as of yet. No.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilwoman, you have a question?
I actually had some questions too about the sewer fees in terms of getting a detailed breakdown. And I found the numbers that Ms. Silvestri talked about to be very interesting. I was looking for it in the budget, and I would like to see a more detailed breakdown of these costs.
Well, as I explained, as I explained, and and I can provide you with 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 a spreadsheet that, as as perhaps Ms. Silvestri knows, because her husband has seen it regularly, when when he was counsel person, that that amortized that that cost. And that's something that that certainly was that that we've used over a period of time. So I can provide.
Yeah, I would like to better understand that, so I could talk to the taxpayers about it. Also, the environmental center. I'm concerned that this is coming up shortly, and we need to write an RFP that really really behooves.
I think I mentioned.
Yeah, that really is well-written, and I'd like the council to be able to see that RFP before it goes out and understand it and understand what's being, what's being.
The the administration is responsible for 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 those, for for doing that and under our normal. So we'll, we'll certainly share it with you.
Yeah, before it goes out, I think it would be important that we look at it, and we all understand it, and we all better have a better understanding of what the issues are.
I'll I'll talk to the mayor about that.
Also, with respect with respect to Rock Spring, I think what we're looking for is the annual income and expense.
And you get that. You get it every month. And in the 12th month, when you get the 12th month, it has the annual.
Can we get that 12 months for the last few years, rather than waiting for each month?
I can provide it, anything you want. If you send me an email and ask for something, you will get. But I'm, what I'm explaining to you is when you got, you you received it earlier this year, I think in February or March
Right.
in there, it had the 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 previous 12 months.
Right.
That values in there. So you do have it.
Okay, so I'll send it to you. I just would like to look at the last five years, so I better understand what's been happening at Rock Spring, that the annual performance over the last five years.
Thank you.
If I may, Council President, Mr. Gross, with regard to the sewer, I I think some folks in the public are, they don't understand the full scope of what this cost is. I think some folks are under the impression that the only bill we pay is to the joint meeting, or the majority of it is to the joint meeting. We just, we have in our bill list today, a bill that was, I assume it was paid already, but maybe not, over 800,000, that was to the joint meeting. And that was our latest quarterly payment. And it is going to end up being about 3.2 million this year, but that is not the only payment. And I I I think what the questioners were trying to get were were specifics about that. Do we have any data on, you know, what our trends are with regard to what we're spending on maintenance? And I understand you are amortizing this. I think if, I think it would be helpful for people to understand, like, how how much goes into that on a regular basis. I think part of the the concern is that if you're amortizing the cost of the system, and the system is 30 years old, 40 years old, you, it's kind of tough to do that now and change the model now, unless people know that, you know, two years ago, we had to fix the this pump station, or we had to remove this piping and replace it with new piping, or whatever those those things are.
As our system gets older, we're going to have to do that more and more and more. And so what what, and I do, I have a spreadsheet, and I'll be happy to share it with you. We estimate this year, it's 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 over 10 million dollars that 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 when you look at all of our costs, including and including the amortization, it's over 10 million dollars a year. And, you know, we have 100 miles of road, which means we have more than 100 miles of sewer. So it's it's an expensive proposition to to maintain.
No, I get it. I I think that kind of detail is important for some folks, since we're considering making the change. And just to reiterate, and this is for the public, we've all agreed that we're going to look at the usage model for next year. And if it makes sense, then then that will be entertained at that time. That's it for me, Council President.
Thank you. If we can have additional commentary, I think there was a question asked, is Chief Abbott required to be at town council meetings? I'm not certain what the requirements of the chief's role is.
First off, it's not, no one's required to be anywhere, but we all have a job to do, and we do, and we, and when we're there when we need to. So, and Mr. Abbott, quite frankly, I'm not sure exactly where that was coming from, but Mr. Abbott's been here, I think, most every meeting list, three or four at least in a in a row. And anytime that I ask him or need him, he he certainly is is always there, as as, as is all of our staff. So I I, you know, in terms of that, I know there was also a question about the timing of our operation of our 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 substations.
Deputy Chief, Deputy Chief, if you'll please just come to the podium. Thank you. I'm sorry. It's hard for the Zoom audience to hear when you're in there.
Understood. We have two substations, one on Washington Street and one on Valley Road. Those are outfitted with our CSU, our community service officers, and our traffic unit. Those people are usually out in the field where we need them. So there are no set hours where officers are actually sitting there manning those buildings. So what we do is we ask everybody to call headquarters, 325-4000, non-emergency, to report something like this, or 911 if it is an emergency.
So just to reiterate, in case anyone has any trouble, anytime you need the West Orange Police Department, your first call should be 911. If it's a non-emergency, then you should dial the non-emergency number, which is 973-325-4100.
4000.
4000.
4000. Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope that answers the question regarding the substations. And then finally, Mr. Kaiser, if you will give us an update on Mr. Trink, his role. I know that we have continued to discuss this at every meeting. And then, of course, the question is, he's still continuing to work on the municipality's behalf. His contract was not approved. So if you could, again, address that for the public, so that there is some understanding about how we are continuing to function. Thank you.
Sure. The the issue is not his contract. He has a legal duty to continue to serve as the town attorney. He was appointed to serve by the mayor. That's the mayor's appointment, not the council's appointment. And he has no choice but to continue to serve under the circumstances. The law basically says, the courts have said that when statutory removal procedures have been established, and they they are for removal of of an officer, of a township officer by the Faulkner Act, they have to be strictly followed. And those requirements are set forth in the Faulkner Act. They require charges or or notice to be brought of of cause, demonstration of cause, a public hearing regarding, with an opportunity for him to defend himself, to be heard. And ultimately, a two-thirds vote of the council, in this instance, four votes are required to actually remove him. And that's only after consideration of all that's put forth at that hearing. So he has no choice but to continue to do his job, frankly. He took an oath to follow the law when he became a lawyer, and that's what he's doing. So I don't know. I understand that the council, some council members aren't happy with how he's done his job, and they have an opportunity to try to remove him if they ultimately make that decision. And again, that decision has to be made at a council meeting, after a full discussion about it, among all the council members. And it would take only majority vote to get to a hearing, but once you have a hearing, it requires a two-thirds vote. I hope that I've explained sufficiently. I have one other, I I thought, and maybe I misunderstood, the Councilwoman, Scarlett, did you indicate that you had to file an Oprah request for something?
I was told I had to by the engineering department, and I knew that was not the case.
No way. I mean, someone, someone made, someone made a mistake, and and it was rectified right away. So.
Okay, I just, I mean, we've repeatedly indicated that no, no elected official has to make a request.
Thank you for clarifying that. Probably.
Councilwoman, did you get the information that you needed?
Yes.
Okay, there it seemed to be an implication that you did not receive that information, so I just wanted to clarify that. Because if you didn't, you should state it to Ms. Carnaval, she'll make sure you get it. I I think it might be warranted for us to, again, discuss how we access as council members information from the administration. Are we to go to directors and request what we need? Are we to go through Ms. Carnaval, or?
Anything you want of the administration, the best thing to do is to send me an email or request. You know, if there's something you want, you know, data, or in terms of your day-to-day work, that you can go to Ms. Carnaval. But if you want something from the administration, some some information, something, anything, you know, we're there, we're there to answer you. You pick up the phone calls. I mean.
Okay, thank you. I also believe, and not to put more work on the on Madam Clerk, but she is mindful of the needs of the council. That's her role for us, is to, and no, no offense, Mr. Mr. Gross, but sometimes you folks in the administration get very busy, and and something may slip. So I think to copy Ms. Carnaval on it would be the best.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that has resolved all of the outstanding questions from the public that I was able to note. Madam Clerk, you did have a response to something that you indicated. In your microphone, please.
Always reminding everyone. So I actually had the same question on that ordinance. I was not sure if it was a chapter 25, and chapter 25 ordinances have to go before the planning board. So I was waiting for an answer on that. And in the meantime, the deadline for advertising had passed. So I was unable to advertise it in time. So it is listed on the July 11th agenda. I've already started the agenda. It's on there. It'll be heard that day. And then I spoke to Mr. Smaraldo today, as far as deadlines were concerned, and he can speak to that.
And and just for the council to know that we have a July 17th deadline to get this into, submitted to the DEP. Councilwoman Rutherford had specific questions. I did send you an email today. I don't know if you've seen it. It answered the questions regarding to, I believe it was about the persons and then the the entities or whatever, stuff to that fact. We did get a response from the DEP. I did forward to you and copy to Council President, if you'd like to share with your colleagues. But it was addressed, and it was based on what we spoke about. And if we get this in our time, this this ordinance has been approved by the DEP, then, as I mentioned in the last meeting, we went back and forth with the DEP about three or four times. This is their ordinance. They have approved our ordinance. It's just based on, if the council now approves it, we can send it, and then that ordinance becomes final upon upon, you know, adoption.
What is the deadline?
July 17th is the deadline to the DEP. So we approve that. If if the council approves on July 11th, we can then send it forward to them, and we will meet the deadline.
Does it need to go to the planning board?
No, I I clerk said, yeah, our clerk just responded.
Clarify that, and that's unfortunate. We didn't get the answer in time to present to you tonight for final adoption. If if approved, we will make the compliance deadline.
Thank you.
Mr. Smaraldo, I had a, an additional question. I didn't see your email today. So I'll check it while we're in this council meeting, but I had an additional question about the impact of that ordinance on other development in town, particularly West Essex Highlands. Did we get an answer on that?
I don't have that answer. I can ask the construction official, Mr. Beyond, because this ordinance is going to be based on the new construction laws and with floodplain management. And he's going to be our floodplain administrator, and I can ask him to come to the next meeting to answer that for you. But I can't, I wouldn't be able to answer that properly, because he he administers the code, and that that will be his responsibility.
I I would think that, that to the extent that this impacts any kind of construction codes, it would have to, any any new applications would would have to at least address it.
Yeah, I think it's important we get a real answer to that question.
With with regard to that settlement, and I know we're skipping around, but since we're on this particular issue, it was brought up in public comment, maybe Mr. Kaiser can address it. The settlement allowed for the developer to not be bound by the steep slope ordinance, either as it was at that time or as it is now. Is there anything in this, and if if you don't know the answer, that's fine. Let's find out what the answer is. Is there anything in this floodplain ordinance that we're considering right now? The state has approved. Is there anything in there that allows us to revisit it? And even if there is not, would the hillside collapse on Northfield Avenue allow us to revisit that settlement? I know it's a Supreme Court decision. I know it's binding. I think we've got some extenuating circumstances, and and that's why I'm asking.
So the honest answer is, I don't know. It's a complicated question, obviously, and it's a multi-part question. And I didn't, I wasn't involved in that settlement. I do know that it involved affordable housing and all that other stuff, and and so there's probably a whole lot of things at play here and how they all shake out. I I don't know. So I I really, I would hesitate to give an opinion at this point.
Who do we go to for an opinion on that?
Well, I can obviously talk to Mr. Trink. I don't, I I think he was involved in that, but there are others involved in that too, if I recall correctly. So I don't, it's a multi-party.
So if you could, Mr. Kaiser, and to the administration.
Encouraging you to ask Mr. Trink on that.
If if you could just find some additional information so that the council can understand more fully what the role and responsibility is, and if it can be revisited, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
I I wasn't quite yet done, Council President.
Not a problem.
So as stated in the email regarding the cannabis ordinance, we've now decided that the Trink firm is not being paid for any of this work. So, again, you've got Gengaro on that ordinance. Either you or someone you designate needs to to review that and present it to us, because I am not prepared to vote on anything that comes from Trink firm.
Councilmember, I don't know by what authority the council can do that. Again, the 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 law is pretty clear. Your remedy under the Faulkner Act, if you're not happy with Mr. Trink, if you believe there is causes to have him removed, is to remove him as a council, which has specific requirements. Until unless that's done, you know, I I don't, the fact that his firm is doing work, I mean, his firm has always been included in his contract. His contract carries over from before, as far as I'm concerned. So I don't know how you get to that end without removing him. So that's why.
NJSA 48:11-3A and C, also 18A:18A-3A and C, lays out how we pay folks with, that don't have a contract. And so that's that's the part.
He has a contract, has a holdover, so.
And I was going to bring this up during the bill list. They don't have a contract. It wasn't approved in March. And based on the public law contract, if you don't have a contract, any QPA, which is a qualified purchasing purchasing agent, can pay up to 44,500. His firm, to date, has been billed 95,000 that we've received so far. So that's more than double.
Okay, I mean, I, look, I suppose all of this could at some point be subject to some sort of litigation, but it's not something I can address at a council meeting, so.
So the administration is not abiding the state public contract law, right? 44,500.
We would not agree with that. Well, we think your interpretation is is not accurate.
Okay.
I will only, I will only, let me, let me just say this. I mean, and and I go back to the to the municipal council, B. James case, which is in New Jersey. which is a New Jersey Supreme Court case. And somewhere in that litigation, I don't, in the, in the decision, it, it talks about the, the notion that you can't do indirectly what cannot, what you can't do directly. And so here again, you can't achieve a de facto removal by some other method. You have to follow the Faulkner Act to accomplish that. So I, I think that's part of, part and parcel of all this. You may disagree, you're free to disagree, but I believe that's the law, and we'll just have to see how it all shakes out. I mean, I don't know what else to say.
I just want to let you know that I plan to call the state comptroller's office tomorrow to get the answers and to ask them to look into this and see what's happening. And, because to me, this is major red flag, I think it's unethical. It can be paid more than the $44,500 because they don't have a contract. This firm does not have a contract.
Make whatever calls you want to make.
Oh, I will.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman.
One, one more thing on that.
And also to the local government services division as well.
Thank you.
One, one more thing on that. So this is not, stopping payment to his firm is not an indirect way of removing him. He would still be a township employee, he is a township employee. He receives income to be a township employee, so it would not remove him. What it, what it does is allow us to exercise our right with regard to payment of bills, approval of contracts, so on and so forth. Now, we're going to have this conversation about the removal, that's in the works. But that particular part of it is, I believe, governed by contracts law, and, and I don't. So I'm just saying, and I, and I, I think the administration should hear this loudly because we will be ground to a halt, and there will be harm done if we don't find a way to move forward and honor the, the, the legal vote of this town council. And this is now the second time, this is the second blatant incident where the council has voted on something presented to the council and either passed it or not. In one case, we, we voted it down, we didn't approve changing the rules for zoning board chair and how many terms they could serve consecutively, and then that was ignored. And, and now we have this one. So we've, we've got to find a way forward that allows us to do the work, and we can still have this fight, but the work has to get done.
I, I don't think that, I don't think that was ignored, and you're, you're referring to the, to the zoning board.
Mr. Kaiser.
Respect to, there was a legal opinion?
A little closer, please.
Can't hear me?
No.
I'm sorry.
The air is killing us with the sound.
It wasn't ignored, there was a legal opinion given by a lawyer, and, and it was followed by the then, I'm not sure if she still is, the, the zoning board attorney, and as I've indicated before, the zoning board is an autonomous, independent body, they have their own council. We don't represent them, we can't really order them to do things, so.
Well, we can create the rules of the road, and that is our function as a legislative branch?
Only consistent with the, with the municipal land use law, which is a preemptive statute.
And nothing that we did was in violation of the municipal land use law. And all we did was maintain the existing ordinance that had been in effect for years and had received a legal opinion when it was put in, into effect initially.
I understand what happened, I, I was here, I observed it, and, and, you know, the, the lawyer's opinion with respect to that issue was that it was ultra-virus. Initially, it is not effective ever, so.
So this is why the council meetings last so long.
Right or wrong, it could always be subject to litigation, but the court may disagree with me at some point. But I think that that's, I think his opinion was correct, and that's where we're at.
And this is why I'm going to reiterate, we need our own special counsel, there should be an RFQ process that goes out, and the council should be able to select whoever comes.
Thank you, I'm just going to ask our council members to please just let me know before we just start talking so that we can maintain some order, please. Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman?
I just, I just want to say, I agree, and with that being said, we have a number of law firms that we have approved with professional service agreements who could do this work, and we need to move the, the work forward.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Gross?
Yeah, I just wanted to advise, make sure that everybody understands this, this work in, in terms of the agenda work that, that is done, it does not come at any additional cost, it's all part of Mr. Trank's being town council. It's not, there's no additional billings for, for most of this. There, there has, there is, I think, with some of the more complex ordinances, there, there are because of research and things of that nature. If we were to have to send this all out, we, this, we would definitely incur additional costs above and beyond, so.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. At this time, I'm going to ask that we move on with our agenda. And Madam Clerk, if we can move forward, item number three, approval of the minutes from the previous meeting.
Yes, public meeting, June 13th, 2023.
Consent?
No, I'm gonna, can we pull this because?
Minutes?
Yes.
If you have a correction to the minutes, you can identify the correction.
Under the bill list, it just lists all the bills that we approved, but it doesn't list the bills that I asked to be removed from the last bill list, which I have right here.
The last page of the bills list, I think, lists all those.
But you list for an example, for Fox, for Fox Rothschild, just labor matters, that's general. I wanted the summary sheet of what it was exactly, what labor matters, exactly.
Councilwoman, I, again, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought you were making arrangements to come in and see them like you did the last time.
I asked that when we get this bill list, because it gets printed for me, to have it included for all the professional services.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm not understanding what you're telling me.
I asked that when the bill list gets printed for professional services contracts, for the bills, to have a detailed breakdown included. You said yes, and I didn't get that, so.
And we can't, we can't provide, the bills list is, the bills list, that's the way it's printed. If you want addition, if you want to see additional documentation, you're, you're certainly welcome to come in and see them at any time.
You can't print them and include them in the bill list?
No, the bills list, the bills list is, is, is as a certain format.
Asking for a detailed summary, and this does not help me, labor matters is very big.
I'll be, we'll be happy to entertain you to come in, you can see anything you want to say.
Okay, well.
Thank you.
I can approve these, so.
Okay, so we, you have a concern with the minutes?
Yes, because it didn't accurately reflect what I wanted and what I said.
Again, this is why we need to put things in writing of what you want, because I.
When I say in a meeting, Councilwoman, I expect them to do it, right? I don't take the minutes. So again, it should have been noted in there, the bills that I had pulled, and it didn't. Those are what detailed minutes look like, thank you very much.
And in the future, all I ask is that you can always send me an email, and I could have corrected it before tonight and given it to everybody, so.
Will do.
Thank you. I'll note that, and then that'll be amended.
Okay.
Can we do it as amended, or do you want to just?
Certainly, we can do it as amended.
I'm still not going to approve those.
That's fine, Councilwoman. We have more than, we have several other people who can, we heard you, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Report of Township Officers, update, West Orange Public Library, Mr. Smeraldo.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, council, council presidents, members of the public. So I'll give you an update on the library. I went there today to visit, and I also spoke with our contractors, and I spoke to Mr. QB, who, by the way, I'm representing him tonight because he did kick off the summer reading program. Let everybody know that that did start tonight at Liberty Middle School. So he sends his apologies for not being here, so I'm representing Mr. QB, hopefully, in the way he's very enthusiastic, so. The update now for the, the library is the detriment, that I will start with our first, is that the rooftop units still have not been set. However, I was speaking to the general contractors this afternoon, and they anticipate them to be on site July 17th, which is a good promise. The, the doors and the glass are still an issue in regards to being provided by the contractor. So what we've done is the, the fit, the short-term fix to help move this project along, starting this Thursday, we're going to be install, installing some temporary doors so that we can more move toward getting our TCO to help get the library open. The, so that, those are the two detriments that we're working on to get, you know, working toward occupying the, the property. The anticipated date for the completion of the outdoor work, the exterior work, including the domestic water lines, the fire sprinkler lines, and potentially the gas line should be July 10th. That's including New Jersey American Water hooking up the, the lines. We're hoping that the, the subcontractor public service will get the meter involved for the, everything is, is, is prepared to that point. The other good thing is that all the change orders approved by the council have been completed, so that, that everything's been done that way. They are going to be working on paving or repairing the areas that were used to trench so that this way we have asphalt down, so it won't be trip haws, and we won't have mud and things of that nature. Speaking to Mr. QB today, he said that all of his furniture and, and racks and shelving and things of that nature have been delivered. They are in storage with, with, where his material is, the books and the like. And, and we're anticipating on or about July 10th that we can allow him to start moving in that material. So that's, that's a good thing, so, but we can't get the CO until, obviously, the, the rooftop units are finally put in. But that doesn't mean that we cannot start the process of moving into the library on or about July 10th. That's our, that's our goal right now, is to get, to move toward that process. It may be sooner, but with the end of the week coming up and next week being 4th of July, we're, we're shooting for that date. So hopefully, we will start that process. According to Mr. QB, he says it may take up to a month for him to move everything in. But then again, we, maybe we'll have some miracles and get that done sooner than that. So that's the latest I can provide to you right now. I did go up to the site, like I said, we have things such as, just to make sure, no, the punch list, oh, the punch list is complete with the exception of one item, and the contractor said he, he can't remember what it is, but it has something to do with the building. Since they're going there on Thursday to, to install those doors, they're going to take care of that one last item, the punch list. The, the pavers are en route for the outdoor, for the outdoor patio that has been leveled, has been fine. People are doing the actual installation of the water line and things of that nature, the construction company, they're also going to be doing the pavers. The wall is built, it's been leveled out, so they're waiting for the pavers to come in, and that, that should be worked on by next week. The curvings were done, we're, we're tough, you know, as I said, July 17th, ensuring road repairs. And the, and the fire launch system, you drive up there now, you go by the hotel by the camera, you'll see the big fire, all the fire suppression system is exposed right now. The, the, the hot box that's going to be installed, once, once New Jersey American Water installs the meters, hot box will be installed, and then we should be in, in good shape.
Mr. Smeraldo, what is the hot box?
A hot box is a big box that, in the wintertime, allows for some heat to stay in there so our pipes don't freeze.
Thank you.
And the access, it's, it's easy access for our maintenance people to get inside so that they can, if they have to close the valves, things of that nature, we can shut it out the street so we don't have burst pipes within the building.
Thank you. Thank you for that update, we appreciate it.
Any questions?
Question.
One question, yes, Councilwoman.
I, just a quick question, so with, how are you managing with our tenant in the building, getting, you know, with all that's going on, everything going well?
We are working very well with our tenant, and we keep them apprised of a lot of the updates. In fact, I owe them an update now because it's the latest information I have, so I will be sending them an email. I will, oh, one thing I do want to update also was that the council last meeting approved the elevators and, and the exterior doors. The purchase orders were sent out, so that's in the, in the process right now, so we are moving forward with that. So those anticipation dates of completion should be by the end of the year, but no later than the end of the year, that's where we're being advised.
And so that would give us two working elevators now.
Correct.
That is awesome, because we only had one. And, and just, Council President, just entertain me a second, just for the public. You know, I really appreciate Mr. QB, his efforts, working with Superintendent Moore, Principal Fitzgerald. There's a dozen or so activities up at Liberty Middle School this summer with our summer reading events and Mr. Kio at the Township Pool and also at the Edison Museum. So just go to the library's website. You know, their programming has not stopped, they've been actually added some additional programming this summer, which is awesome. And the French group that I met with last week will be raising money, will be working on raising money because obviously, there's a lot more needs of, you know, with the, with the site, of course, the outdoor patio area and whatnot of what we could, you know, what, what was originally scheduled to be finished with change orders and what they're short on, some of the amenities that they wanted to put in. So well, major fundraising will go into effect to help them along.
Thank you.
Council President, if I could just, I just want, wanted to add that Mr. Smeraldo and, and I we're also regularly in touch with our tenants' representatives in Washington, ensuring that, that we take good care of, of that, our, our tenant agreement, and that we're within it. And they're, they're, they're very good in working with us, and we're, I think we do a very good job of working with them. So we're cultivating a long-term relationship with them.
Good to know, thank you. Councilwoman?
Mr. Smeraldo, so based on the expected delivery of the rooftop units, do you now have an updated opening date or a target opening date?
The, the issue, once they're installed, they told, our contractor has told me that it could take up to anywhere to two or three weeks to thermal balance and things of that nature, whatever it takes to balance. I would have to coordinate with Mr. QB. Mr. QB has told me that it will take him about 30 days to install and place all the shelving. So I'm hoping that somewhere between that three weeks of July 17th and the 30 days of July 10th, somewhere maybe by mid-August would be a good target date. And I, I can't make that promise to you because I don't know the exact, but as we get closer, by the next council meeting, I'm sure I'm going to have a better, more realistic date. The only thing I, my next council meeting is I won't know if those rooftop units will be, will be on track or not. I will make sure I contact the vendor, but we should have, we should be by the next council meeting, looking forward to having them starting to move in there.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, correspondence from Mayor McCartney regarding public building closures is on the agenda. Is there, Mr. Gross, is there any commentary regarding the correspondence from the Mayor McCartney regarding the public building closures?
I, I, we don't, we don't have any commentary, I think her, her communication speaks for itself.
Well, there is some question about whether or not she has the authority from some of my colleagues to, to close the buildings. If you could speak to that, I would greatly appreciate it.
I, I, I'll, I'll defer to legal, I can't imagine if the mayor doesn't have authority over all of our facilities, who does? But having said that, that, that probably is a legal determination.
Well, I, I, I'm sorry, I wasn't involved with this in terms of, before it occurred, but reading from the Faulkner Act, which I quickly looked for here, the section on mayoral duties, make sure I have it right, 40:69A-40, mayoral duties.
Just into the mic, Mr. Kaiser.
I'm sorry. This section of the Faulkner Act, which is, 40:69A-40, mayoral duties includes supervise the care and custody of all municipal property, institutions and agencies, and make recommendations concerning the nature and location of municipal improvements, so forth and so on. So I think she controls the buildings to, to a degree. I frankly don't think that this is strictly a building issue, but think about it, when the buildings are, when the building is open, any municipal property is open, we have to be concerned about security for it, so we have to have somebody here to make sure that it's maintained in good condition and there's nobody, shouldn't be here, here. And I think, but I think our intent is to try to get the council to move along with meetings, not have them until 3 o'clock in the morning. I think if you guys are working at 11 o'clock and you're making progress and there's not much left to do, you know, I'm inclined to keep going, I have a problem with that. I, I take a practical view of all this, but I think that's her intent, and, and I think it's a sensible intent. I've been doing this for almost 25 years. We, we've had occasional meetings that go after midnight over the course of that time, but very few. We ought to be able to get our work done by 11 o'clock here, most of the time. There, there will be inevitably times when there's complicated issues or a lot of issues, and it'll take longer. or a lot of issues and it'll take longer, but I I think it's a reasonable goal, so.
Thank you.
Counselor President, for the record, while it may be her intent and it may be a reasonable goal, that letter was absolutely atrocious. It's full of opinion. And if her goal was to help the town council, that certainly didn't do it, especially given she already knew that we had all five of us spoken about it, had both public and private conversation about it. So whatever the intent was, I don't think it accomplished the goal.
I didn't, I didn't read the memo. I don't know.
Thank you. Bills? Consent resolutions? There are no bills on the list that I'm looking at.
I don't, I don't list the dates normally, only when there's. I only listed them because they kept getting pulled.
Okay.
So normally it's just the current bills.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, going forward, yeah, going forward, I can certainly do that, but it would just be today's date.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay. So if we can pull under the budget of the town, under litigation, eighteen zero six one seven, date of April first, twenty twenty-three, Trank Isabel Zadiki invoice.
I, this is gonna be, can you send me an email exactly what you want to pull if there's gonna be?
Sure, but I would like it on the record.
Well, no, I understand, but I'm just saying, following up, I would like an email so I can put it in.
Sure.
Thank you.
And if I can get an email, Mr. Gross, with what I requested, that would be easier versus me coming in every single time. It's a document. They can email it to me. I want a breakdown of bills.
All of our documents, you're certainly welcome to come in and see it. We don't know exactly which ones you want to see.
I will send you an email.
We're not, we're not going to guess, so.
I never said it's for you to guess. I will send you the email.
And and we will make the documents available to you, but you will have to come in and see them. We're not going to spend the time copying and pasting, you know, law, um, that many documents because you're talking about all of the, you you want to see everything. If I understand you correctly, what you're asking about are all professional service contracts.
Why can't you send me an email, the ones that I'm requesting? Why do I have to come in? You should be able to send me an email if I send you what I want specifically.
If you, if you send me a list of what you want specifically, we'll be happy to do that.
Great.
As long, as long as it does not become compless.
Thank you.
Volume, if the volume is such that 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 that's not effective, then we'll we'll let you know that. If you're looking at at a, a, what I'll, what I'll call a, I don't wanna say minimal, but a reasonable workload, yeah, of course we can do that.
Great. So I will continue. Trank Isabel and Siddiki invoice April twenty twenty-three, professional services in the amount of twenty-four thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars and fifty six cents. Again, Trank Isabel and Siddiki invoice April twenty twenty-three, professional services, ninety dollars. Price Mies Schulman invoice March slash April, twelve thousand, four hundred fifty-two dollars. All for litigation. That's it. Thank you.
Oh, there was like a few more. So just, we can send you the email, but just for the record, all of them that have, that are to Trank Isabel Siddiki, whatever the name of the firm is, but also one eight zero seven four zero on June twentieth to Mister De Par. I I don't understand how, it's one eight zero seven four zero. March to May twenty-three, public, that's outside of the contract period, eleven sixty-six, sixty-six, I'm pulling that.
You'll, you'll send me an email?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam Clerk, are we resolutions?
Yes. No, we do that on consent. Yeah.
All right. Are there any resolutions being questioned this evening? Questions first? If there are no questions, are there any resolutions being pulled?
Yes. Can I just, excuse me, one second. So administration is pulling two fifty-three dash twenty-three off the agenda. We're moving. Moving.
We're moving.
Which one? Two fifty-three, twenty-three.
M M.
Yes.
Thank you.
So I'm, I don't, I may be missing the.
It's on the revised agenda.
Yeah. Oh, did you print it out for us?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, that's, that was removed.
Resolution authorizing hiring of four police officers?
Correct. Do you have it?
I have some in the news.
Councilman, do you have it?
I don't have the cover, but that's okay. I have it on.
Any resolutions being pulled?
Yes, one seventy-six through.
Two eighteen.
Two eighteen, including two forty-two and two forty-five, two forty-eight, two fifty-one.
And two forty-three.
I said two forty-three.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I didn't have two forty-three.
I didn't even.
So we have two forty-two and two forty-three, two forty-five.
Two forty-eight, two fifty-one.
Two fifty-one.
Okay, is there consent on the remaining resolutions?
No, wait, excuse me. I didn't pull two forty-two. I pulled two forty-three.
I know someone else.
Someone else did? Okay.
No.
No.
I think that was a mistake.
Yeah, it's a mistake. I meant to say two forty-three for the high school.
So you're, you're gonna approve two forty-two. Fireworks for Essex County Country Club. That what you're doing? You're leaving?
I'm leaving that one on.
Okay, and you're pulling two forty-three?
Correct.
Okay.
There's issues with safety.
Gotcha. Okay, so can we? Is there any others being pulled this evening? Said two forty-five?
Yes, two forty-five has been pulled. All right, so.
Well, yeah, these are to discuss, so they're not all to vote no, but most of them are.
Okay, thank you. Is there consent on the remaining items? And can we go over the remaining items? And let's just make sure what the, so what we have right now to approve that was not pulled is two forty-two, twenty-three, two forty-four, two forty-six, two forty-seven, two forty-nine, two fifty, and two fifty-two.
Correct.
For the consent agenda.
It's on the revised agenda. I'm looking at the old one. Yeah.
You know, Mr. Moon wrote the fireworks one for Essex County. You realize that, right?
So I do. I'm I'm happy to discuss that if you'd like.
Yeah.
No, I I get it.
It's the same reason for Montclair.
Sure, but going forward, I won't approve it next time. Well, for the past three meetings, you stated to put Mr. Kaiser's name on it. No one from Mr. Trank's firm should be doing work for this municipality.
All right, are we ready?
Yes, we're ready, Madam Clerk.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented?
We can go back to one seventy-six, twenty-three.
No, they're all pulled.
Okay.
Yeah, so first one that is not pulled was two forty-two dash, I'm sorry, yeah, two forty-two dash twenty-three. Resolution permitting display of fireworks at the Essex County Country Club.
Well, why wouldn't we start from the one seventy-six?
They were all pulled.
Now they, now.
No.
They approved two forty-two. They're gonna do the fireworks.
I'm sorry, you're doing it the other way.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's not even eleven yet.
I know.
So let's start with one seventy-six dash twenty-three.
Counselor President, in the interest of time, one seventy-six through two eighteen. This is now the second or third time they've been pulled. Same reason, we don't have to rehash it, unless you guys want to.
We should, we should for the, at least to state why for people.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Can one person talk at a time, please? Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Counsel President.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Councilman Rutherford, you were speaking.
Councilwoman, you have some more commentary?
No, it's okay.
Okay, one seventy-six.
I I I have commentary.
Oh, sure.
Thank you, Counsel President. Yeah, so again, these are what we set out to do in the beginning of the year, and some folks are wondering why the agenda is so long. So in the beginning of the year, going back quite a few months, when Mr. Gross first acknowledged that the administration wanted to increase various fees, a lot of the fees being builder-related, which is great revenue for the for the township. We agree that we were gonna pull them off of being ordinances and then reintroduce them as resolution. So that's why you see a lot of activity on the agenda, because this is a course of action that we all agreed to way back when everything, I guess, was more in agreement with the council. Now that we have to set our budget for next month, I think we're scheduled for July twentieth, if I'm.
That is correct.
Not mistaken, unless major changes need to be made, which may have to be. Because if we don't approve these fees and continue the work that we committed to do, we are not gonna have the revenue that we needed for the budget that was spent countless hours on. So I just wanted to rehash it.
But if I can, if I can add to that, and and I I understand councils logic in terms of 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 holding these actions of these. As as Councilwoman Castelino said, these are all things that the council voted to have added to the agenda. These are all things that are, the legal department has provided, no additional cost. And so, and if we, if if you do not adopt resolutions and the ordinances, Councilwoman Castelino is correct, I won't be able to certify the budget and we will not be in a position to adopt a- as as it's, as it's introduced. So while, again, I understand the the theory behind your logic, as as Mr. Kaiser said, the remedies that you have for your concerns do not include not moving forward with with these issues for the budget. So the administration would ask you to seriously reconsider. And and again, the these, if if we, if we were to first off, not even sure we're legally in a position to scrap them and 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 use a different firm, but if we were to do that, we certainly would incur additional costs as well. So it is, it is not something that the administration takes lightly.
Counselwoman, so I would like that in writing, that the firm is not charging us for the work they did on these bills, for these resolutions. And if that's the case, if we can add it, I want it in writing proof, so that we don't get a bill from them, then I'll prove it.
Well, I'm representing to you that we don't, that they don't charge for that.
I would like it in writing, Mr. Gross, that they are not charging for this work. Thank you.
So Councilwoman Castelino, just to be clear on the record, these were originally introduced on May sixteenth, so about a month ago. We've had multiple, probably, I think, three or four council meetings that lasted past or around two o'clock prior to May sixteenth. So this is not why we're here. I mean, this may contribute, and I don't discount that, but this is not the the reason why. Additionally, tonight is the first time anyone from the administration has said that the Trank firm is not being paid to create these ordinances.
Correct.
We've had multiple meetings, discussions in public and private about it, and the first time anyone has said that was tonight. So like my colleague here, I would certainly like to see that in writing and and know that. And then I'll I'll vote for it because he is paid a salary as an employee. And until we go through the removal process, that will stand. I just want to be clear, though, we're not paying the Trank firm. I am not voting to approve any bills, and I do not expect any bills to be paid that are presented by the Trank firm. Period. And and to do so would be, I think, unless I'm outvoted by my council colleagues in blatant contradiction to the will of the council, and I don't know what rule that violates, but it certainly violates something. And I hope we don't, we don't have to, have to find out.
I just have to make a quick statement, too. I firmly agree, if it is true that we are not paying them for this work, again, I would be willing to move forward, but the remedy is simple. This is a simple clerical function to take these or these resolutions and put a different name on them. If Mr. Kaiser could do a special project, he's done special projects before. This is an administrative task, and I don't see why it's so difficult. And if not, someone else could do it, but we do need to move forward.
I mean, I don't put my name on something unless I've prepared it. I mean, I don't.
You could review it. They're simple. They're simple fees that we've all agreed upon and have been talking about now for three meetings. This is not complicated stuff.
Well, nobody's asked me to review them, and I don't, and frankly, I don't have the time to review all of these easily. But, you know, I I always like to help when I can help, but it's like.
Sure, Mr. Gross can help you out.
Well, I think we, I think we have verbalized that our colleagues are willing to move these resolutions forward if they can be assured that the Trank Isabel firm is not being billed.
Mr. Trank is on its way, so.
I'm not addressing Mr. Trank in a council meeting. Are you kidding? Come on.
And it has to be in writing.
Mr. Gross, I would like them in the resolutions that these were prepared without, you know, for free or however, whatever lingo it is in each resolution, that there's no charge.
So colleagues, I'm a little bit confused because the the, you know, a couple minutes. So let me go back just with these set of ordinances and resolutions. It was in May sixteenth, we talked about doing this prior with the administration. So it wasn't like in writing, but we, the conversation was was earlier in the year. And then it was about no confidence, anyone from his firm, there was no confidence in writing these resolutions, not just swapping out names. And then it became swapping out names, like there's re, and I get it, there's repercussions, this isn't easy. And I commend you, you're, 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 I talked to all of you separately. I still feel a lot of this is personal, but again, that's my opinion. And I feel that you're entitled to your opinions, but at the same token, we have to do the people's business here, and part of the people's business is getting this budget together. We don't want to put ourselves in a situation, and I guess where I get disappointed is swapping. We could just swap out the name. Well, then that defeats the purpose of the no confidence in the preparation. We also, you know, I've also been told that, you know, you agreed to fireworks, you agreed to a cannabis store. So again, you want to pick and choose, and I get it, every, there's a lot of frustration. I don't want to argue over this, but now we're at the dire hour where we need to get this done. So administration could double-check your statement because although you're saying Mr. Trank isn't gonna get paid additional money, so if this is part of what he gets paid for, he still has to get paid for what he's contracted to do as a township attorney. So I I'm asking administration to make sure you're. So I, I'm asking administration to make sure you're, you're true on your statement in regards to, will he, or is he getting paid as a township employee and not extra, because this is included in his normal fee?
It is.
And I think you need to clarify that for my colleagues, because I don't want them to be misled.
It's included in his, his, the pay, that, that, that he is paid as an employee, yes.
Okay, so now I go back to you, are you okay with that? Because you're state, making statements of not getting, making payment at all. So I just want to make sure it's clear, so there's no confusion moving forward, and we could move on and do the people's business.
So let me, first, the removal process is about him as an employee, as a department head. The resolution, and we don't have to rehash all of the timelines on it, but this was produced after we did not approve his contract, because his contract was not approved in March, when it was presented to us. And it expired in December. So if we continue to vote on things that he has as a work product, even if we agree not to pay him, it's like, how can you have him do the work product and then not pay him for what you agreed for him to do? So that is the purpose of it. Now, the reason why we have chosen to vote on some of these issues, or at least the reason why I have chosen to vote on some of these issues, is because either they affect folks outside of town that don't need to get brought into this West Orange political debate and should not be affected by it, or they have a serious time constraint. The cannabis vote we took had a time constraint. The floodplain had a time constraint. So we chose, and Montclair was out of town, so we are trying, or at least I'm trying, to compromise and still get some of the work done that has to get done, even in the midst of this fight. Now, what is disappointing to me, Councilwoman, is when layoffs are threatened, if things aren't done. The answer to fixing the problems we have financially is not laying people off. I think all of us, including you, have said that we want no layoffs and have done a tremendous amount of work to try and avoid them. Some of it was hard, some of it causes pain to existing employees, and that was a very difficult decision, but that's what leadership is asked to do. So to threaten additional layoffs, whether directly to council members or out in the community, I think is, is, well, it's certainly disappointing, it's poor leadership, and it's not even going to happen, because that's not how the layoffs work. So I understand that there's this threat of layoffs if we don't approve these fees, I get it. I think that's just bad business. I think if I were to do that in the private sector, I'd be fired for creating such fear and chaos in the employer, in the employees. I think it's wrong to do that. So I think we've got to stop with the, the threats to get what some want done, and I think we have to find a way to move forward. What we have proposed is the Trank firm not get paid. That was proposed, it was discussed, it was voted on, and it passed. And whether folks like it or not is irrelevant, right? As I've been told multiple times, whether you like it or not, and this is even about whether I like it or not. But in this particular case, it is not about popularity, it's about legality. If there's something illegal with that resolution, then go through the proper channels to rectify the situation. Other than that, I expect it to be abided by, which is why we pulled the bills today and why we pulled these. Now, had you stated, Mister Gross, or anyone from the administration stated prior that there is no additional charge for any of these issues, these resolutions that are on the agenda, we could have had a conversation about passing it for tonight, but because it was introduced to me tonight, and I need to verify that, because I have no confidence in Mister Trank, I can't vote on it tonight. I'm going to stay the course. Now, can we do it next meeting? I believe it's July eleventh. That's entirely possible, but that's going to require some conversation.
Thank you.
President, I'd just like to add one thing. I'm sorry, I don't want to belabor this conversation, but councilmen, so in regards to, you know, I don't know who's threatening what, but this is simple math, and the simple math is this. So we have a, a budget hearing on July twentieth. The revenue created from this, these transactions that we committed doing early in the year, which is almost a million dollars, is getting applied to the budget, is it not, Mister Gross? Okay, if it's not done, then we're going to be short those monies. So whether it's premature to say that there'd be layoffs, but, which I would be against, or a budget increase, either way, you still have to find a million dollars. So I hope we could work this out. You know, I've been trying to work with all of you off, offline to try to resolve this and try to have some, some peace here and find a resolution. And on both sides, I've been trying to work with the administration as well. But at the end of the day, we need to, both sides need to come together, because this has to get passed, or else you're going back to square one on, before July twentieth to discuss how you're making up that budget hole. It's simple, it's simple math.
Okay.
It's not a threat, it's simple math.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
You are well aware, Councilwoman.
Councilman, please, Councilman, please, please, I'm going to yield to Mister Gross, he was about to speak.
Yeah, and if, if.
I've asked for you all to please just let me authorize speaking.
If, as, as a matter of logistics, if I can suggest that some, this evening, that you, you table the resolutions to the next meeting and table the ordinances on.
Second reading.
Second reading to the next meeting, and, and introduce the ones on first reading, then everything could be handled at the next meeting with whatever assurances you need.
Thank you. Mister Councilman.
Mister Gross, I appreciate you proposing a solution. I think that's the right approach to solving the problems. I'm happy to have that conversation and make that consideration. Councilwoman, you know for well who's making these threats, and that's a part of the problem.
Councilman, can we not make accusations?
Excuse me, Council President. That's not an accusation. Councilwoman, I'm, I have the, I have the microphone. You know for well, because you've witnessed it. So we, we have to do a better job communicating to these township employees that layoffs are not on the table. And that's our side and the administration's side. And if one side doesn't do it, it causes confusion and uncertainty. So that does have to stop. Now, there are a host of alternatives, some of which have been presented to the mayor. Some have yet to be presented, including what Mister Gross just mentioned tonight. There are a host of alternatives that could prevent us from even having to consider that, but even if it were considered, the process that we'd have to go through to do layoffs, it's not like it happens on July twenty-first if we don't have the right revenue. It's still a period of time, and, and it's not guaranteed it would, it would go through. And, and because of that, we shouldn't use that as a hammer against anyone, because in the process, township employees get a message from us that, and, and Mister Gross can attest to this, will make them seek employment elsewhere, will make them uncertain about their future here, and it certainly will affect morale and our ability to retain and attract employees. So I encourage the, the administration to find another way to make your point than using layoffs. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. If I can just respond for a moment, please. So I don't believe that I have heard anyone threaten layoffs. I have heard the question asked about what is the process. I have heard Mister Gross indicate that notification had to go to the unions in order for that process to begin. So again, I'm a little confused.
I can satisfy you.
I, I, I'm still talking. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I'm a little confused about why there is consideration of threats when the process has, has been articulated and explained. Step one is, step two is, step three is, there is going to be fear and concern, no matter what, because the alternatives on how we meet the budget for 2023 were laid out from the beginning, the onset, it was very clear. Either we increase fees so that we can have the revenue necessary to meet our financial burdens, or we will do layoffs. That information was communicated from this administration at the onset of the budget process and conversations. I'm not clear on why there's this hammer down and threat implication, because that's not what I heard or what I have interpreted.
So let me satisfy that for you.
Councilwoman Castellino, thank you.
Maybe you can, because you were in the meeting.
I, I can. So council, we, councilman and myself and, and the mayor and another party was in the meeting, was in a meeting, trying to resolve some issues, and.
Just speaking to the mic.
Sorry, folks, the air. And and were we all getting frustrated? Yes. But at the same time, I did not hear that's where the mayor, what the mayor wanted to do. And, and councilman, listen, to make that accusation, you know, we all, we all talk and we all get frustrated, and it, it stayed there. So it's, it's disappointing that you're bringing that up here. Because I, I, you know.
It may be disappointing.
All right, we're going to go, we're going to continue to move through the agenda.
Excuse me, Council President.
I, I am going to continue to move the agenda. I am going to now ask.
Excuse me, Council President. I don't believe that is consistent with Roberts' rules of order. We are still on this issue. There was a statement made, it was responded to, I am entitled to respond to that response.
I have given you an opportunity to respond, and now I'm going to continue moving the agenda.
A statement was made on the record that is inaccurate, that needs to be corrected.
Okay.
I'm going to continue to move the agenda along, because we have business to do. Thank you.
So in the meeting, in the meeting you and I were in.
Madam Clerk, that is not on the agenda, and I am asking that we stay focused on the agenda, please.
And you also frustrate everybody.
Thank you. Councilwoman, Councilwoman, and Councilman, Madam Clerk, please, can we move with the agenda?
I, I have a, I would like.
I am going to ask that we move the agenda, if it is not germane.
It is germane, and I would like to speak. I also had a conversation, I also had a conversation with the mayor on this topic, and that suggestion was made, that that could be the possibility.
I am not disagreeing.
So I just want the record to be clear.
And it's clear. I think I made a statement that said, from the beginning, there was outlined what the process and our options are. I am not denying that that is a valid and real possibility if we cannot get these fees approved. That is simple math. So yes, we are, we are clear. And that, again, as, as I am repeating what I initially said just momentarily ago, we had several options outlined as how we were going to get this budget approved. It was either the increase of fees or laying off of personnel. Madam Clerk, can we please move the agenda? Thank you.
So we're on Resolution one seventy-six dash twenty-three. So I would like to, before we take these.
I had made a suggestion.
I was going to say, before we take these, the recommendation from the administration was to table one seventy-six through two oh one. Is there a motion to table?
And there's a couple others.
Well.
Two eighteen, two forty-three, two forty-five, two forty-eight, two fifty-one.
No.
No, two forty-three isn't going to be tabled. We're going to, we're going to have discussion. It's okay, that's the one regarding the fireworks at the high school, and there are safety concerns there, so we're going to leave that one.
And two forty-five, we.
It's two forty-five.
I have two forty-five.
No, we approved, we approved two forty-five.
No, we didn't approve two forty-five.
It was pulled.
For discussion.
There's also one for executive session.
That is the executive session. Two forty-five is executive session. So we're going to, again, so that we can go in order, is there a motion to table one seventy-six through two oh one?
Plus two eighteen.
Through two eighteen.
Wait a minute, so just.
Yeah, others.
Two forty-five, two forty-eight, and two fifty-one.
That's, the motion for two eighteen was to pull?
Yes.
To table.
Are we going to pull or table?
To table.
It's been pulled.
Yes, he's making a suggestion to table, please. That's my question.
So, so moved, and I'm going to second to table. Madam Clerk, the vote.
Hold on, because I just want to be clear on what we're taping here.
One seventy-six through two eighteen.
Plus two eighteen.
Right.
Okay.
That's it, for now.
Not the other ones that have.
Let's just go through these right now in order, so that we don't confuse ourselves.
Well, that's too late, but.
Too late.
Too late for me.
Okay.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve to table, please?
I make a motion.
We've already made the motion, and it's been seconded.
I didn't hear it, so can we?
I made the motion, and Councilwoman Castellino seconded.
Okay. Okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Geber Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpas?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes. All right, so now we are at two forty-three. Resolution permitting display of the fireworks at Degnan Field, West Orange High School. This resolution permits the West Orange Recreation Department to display fireworks on July fourth, 2023, with a rain date of July eighth, 2023. Is there discussion?
Yes. So I believe, based on the recommendations of our Parks Director, our Police Chief, and our Superintendent, that we shouldn't be having the fireworks at the high school due to a safety concern, so my vote is now.
Okay. Is there any other commentary?
Mister Gross, how much, how much will we save? I know that the cost for the fireworks, I believe it's around forty-four thousand, is not going to be saved, but how much would we save by not doing it?
Total, total in for the Fourth of July is about, oh, about eighty-one thousand dollars. Now, some of that stuff, we would continue on there as daytime activities as well. The, the, certainly the nighttime costs well over twenty, and again, I want to stop off my head, I have, I have a breakdown between twenty and thirty thousand on, on just, just security aspects of the nighttime.
And have we already paid for the fireworks?
Yeah.
Firework, fireworks, we are committed to. If the, if the council decides not to have the fireworks for the Fourth of July, we certainly will have discussions with them to see whether or not there's any possibility of, of an alternate date, or what all, what, what options that we might have. And, and there may not be any, you know, at this rate.
The eighth is the rainy.
So.
So.
That's a typo, it's the fifth.
Oh, the fifth?
Yeah, somebody said it. Why don't we do it on the fifth? You get lesser crowd, that was part of the conversation.
No, I don't disagree with that at all. I think, I think the date is the, is part of the issue. I, we've seen in other towns, and to Mister Gross's earlier point, he didn't elaborate, but he was speaking about how things have gone bad at other township events, not West Orange events, other townships, and it has been so bad that they decided to stop because of the risk. And that is my concern. If we vote for this now, and then we have it, and something goes wrong, it's, it would, it would eat me up.
Okay, so then it sounds like there is unreadiness to have the fireworks, and I think it's been clarified that there are some additional day activities, which includes the food truck festival at the high school. Have the security measures for the food truck festival versus the security measures for the fireworks, are they separated? Are they separate?
Significantly different. I mean, it is, it's, it's night and day difference.
And so we're not voting on having the food truck festival, that's not something that this council has to vote upon. This is exclusively for the fireworks, just by.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So then I'm, I'm going to call the vote.
Excuse me, Council President. The only thing that Mister Keough had mentioned with the food trucks, I'm not sure if any of them would pull out, because we're canceling the fireworks, I don't know.
That, well, we don't, look, this is wide open.
Yeah, no, no, safety's first, but.
I, I'm not going to tell you the. I, I'm not gonna tell you that we haven't put thought into it, because we have. Um, but we don't know, there's things we just don't know, we don't know what the reaction would be to that. Um, so, but it's certainly, you know, every action has an equal and opposite reaction, so.
So the food truck festival is scheduled to take place from 1:00 in the afternoon until dusk?
Well, yes, presumably, that was under the presumption that there was gonna be fireworks. Now, whether or not the festival would go that later or not, we'll, we'll, to talk, you know, if, if the council decides not to have the fireworks. Then we will have discussions with the vendors and figure out what the best alternatives are in, you know, in the alternative.
Okay.
Do we also have, um. I mean, obviously, the rain date is scheduled for the 5th, is there, like, if we're committed to. I don't know, can you shoot them off at the, well, I guess you can't really do it at the town pool in the future, but on a different date, just for the town residents, can that be done, or?
I'm sorry, I'm.
If we're paying for the fireworks anyway, can it be done? See, unfortunately, I wish we were having this conversation a lot sooner. Because while schools were open, maybe we could have permitted, like, um, families just to get wristbands to get into the, you know.
Which we, we, that was discussed.
I know, I know, well, it's hard to do now, this falls out, but.
Well, also, the space doesn't lend itself to that, you would, well, maybe with the fencing.
It's hard, it's hard, yeah.
So those are plans that we can consider if we decide to do it at a later date. Um, we can also include some of those additional security measures. I, I think at this point, we just need to make a executive or legislative decision. If we're comfortable with the security risks that have already been identified, again, Chief of Police. Administration, Superintendent of Schools, and certainly our unreadiness, we just need to make a decision if July 4th is going to happen. Is there any further discussion necessary, or can we call the vote?
I, I think Councilwoman Castellino is asking us to consider an alternate date. I'm happy to consider it, and we have Deputy Chief here, he could give some advice and guidance about the type of crowd we would expect, not on July 4th.
I don't, I don't know that we can get an alternate date without speaking to the vendor.
Yeah.
To find out what their availability is.
Obviously, if we, if we had a rain, if it rains, we're gonna have another date, I mean, we, we would be prepared for that. Not sure what that would mean in terms of changing. Um, our, our security plans for that. But, but certainly, if, if the idea is, and, and I've done this in other municipalities. Uh, where it was moved from 4th of July to some other day in another town, it was their Founder's Day, or whatever. There, it was something to another date where there was only local interest in it, not, not global interest. Uh, which is on 4th of July, and, and, whether it's the 4th of July or the 5th of July. It, it's, it's gonna have more global interest, it's just the time of year, I, I think. Certainly be a lesser crown, but whether, whether it would be how significant.
People would be working on the 5th, so it'd be a smaller crown.
It's hard to say.
Right.
It's worth a discussion.
Okay. Are we ready to call the vote for the fireworks? Madam Clerk, 242?
243.
243 dash 23, Resolution permitting display of fireworks. Um, please call the vote, is there a motion to approve 243 23? There being no motion, let's move on.
The fireworks, that's really sad.
All right.
It is really sad.
Really sad.
It is, and that's the hard part of making these decisions.
Yeah. But I think we've articulated it quite well. Uh, we have some safety concerns, we don't have the mechanisms of control in place. And unfortunately, the role of this council is to make sure we put the safety, welfare, and health of our residents first.
I get it.
Thank you. All right, um, we have 245 dash 23, Resolution authorizing an executive session that was pulled.
Yes, I would, um, I'm happy to go into executive session if we need to, I do not want to receive an update from Mr. Trank, Mr. Kaiser, or some other. Um, Mr. Kaiser actually only, unless there's a member of the administration that can do it. Um, because this is a litigation matter, and we've been very clear about paying those bills for litigation, so.
Okay, so I move, um, for the executive session.
I second executive session.
Um, just, okay, so if we're, we're, what are we voting on in executive session?
We're not voting on anything, we're, we're, right now, we're going to have the executive session. We don't vote in executive session.
No, right, we, we're, what we're doing is, is authorizing executive session. Like, so if we vote yes, then we're gonna have executive session, if we vote no, we're not gonna have executive session.
That's correct.
Right, so what I just stated was.
He wants to look, he does want Mr.
I don't want Mr. Trank in, in, in executive session.
We are voting on authorizing an executive session.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk? Okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Geber Michael?
No.
Councilman Rutherford?
No.
Councilwoman Scarpas? Council President Williams?
Yes.
So do we get?
So the motion, so the motion does not pass for executive session.
Well, I'd like to hear about the police and fire litigation.
So would I.
Okay.
Well, then maybe.
It's, it's.
But not from you.
But, sir, council is paid through JFAS, this council well knows, so this has nothing to do with thinking that this is about advising the status that litigation, which the council agrees to act, so.
Thank you, Mr. Trank. Thank you. Um. 246 dash 23, that was under, that was.
248 is next.
Yep, 248. Resolution commemorating the 250th anniversary of the establishment of the United States as an independent nation. And authorizes the appointment of a committee to develop a plan for this commemoration. That will promote the maximum involvement of our residents, neighborhoods, businesses, schools, civic organizations, and institutions in the commemorations. I move for the acceptance of this resolution. Is there a second? Thank you.
We pulled it to discuss.
Well, we're discussing.
Okay, we're gonna, we're discussing it.
Was that just a motion?
I think this may have been one you want to table.
Why?
Commemoration?
I thought it was pulled because of who wrote it, not because of what it said.
You're right.
Exactly, but also would like some change, like, I would like to know how the committee is going to be comprised, and if council has the ability to appoint.
It's very vague in there.
Well, I, I was, I had the same question, um, written, is how was the committee gonna be formulated? Um, so do we have any, um, information from the administration on the composition of the committee?
I have nothing to add to this discussion. So probably a good idea, doubly good idea that.
To table?
Table.
Okay, so it's been moved and properly seconded for this to, um, be heard. Uh, we can vote it down if we choose not to do that at this time.
Rescind your motion.
You, you're right, it wasn't moved to table, it was moved to approve.
It was moved to approve, you can rescind that and then move to table.
Okay, I'll rescind.
Okay, thank you.
And, um, is there a motion to table?
I make a motion to table.
Thank you. Okay, all right, to the next meeting.
The vote, Councilwoman Castellino?
No.
Councilwoman Geber Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpas?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes. Um, can the administration please give us some information on how the committee is going to be comprised when it comes back? Thank you. All right, um, next we have, uh, 251 dash 23, Resolution authorizing acceptance of Grant American Rescue Plan. ARP Act 2021 Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund Automated License Plate Reader Initiative. Grant number ALPR 14 dash 21.
Can you speak to this, Mr. Gross?
We need this in order to get the grants, a requirement, and I strongly urge you to.
Um, I move for the motion to be.
Can we have the conversation first, please?
That's all.
So, um, you mentioned earlier for the first time that, uh, some of these resolutions are drafted at no additional cost. Does that include the members that work for Mr. Trank's firm?
Yes.
So the, the members of his firm do not charge for drafting resolutions or ordinances?
That's correct. There are some ordinances, as I mentioned before, there are some ordinance that, that are, are not just drafting, they're, they're researching and things of that nature. So those types of ordinances, like, perfect example of that is the.
The cannabis.
Cannabis. Um, but something as, as this, there's no additional charge.
Thank you, Mr. Gross.
And, and how would we know the difference as council members?
Well, most councils have competence in the people that serve them.
This one doesn't.
Well, you have other people that serve.
Your list comes later.
The bill just has their name and the amount, that's it.
Well, I'm just saying, you were asking me, how, how would you know? One of the way you know is if your chief financial officer represents to you that that's the case, you can decide whether or not that has any veracity.
Okay, Councilwoman. Stop it, it's, it's 10 minutes to 10, let's stop it.
Is there, is there a requirement from the township to spend any money to, there's, it says zero match, so it's 100% grant?
There's no match on this.
All right, so it's been, is there any other questions?
I assume we're gonna table this one?
No, um, it's been moved and properly seconded, and I'm not rescinding.
I have one further question. Is there a deadline for our response, and what is that deadline?
July.
July.
I can't tell you, I remember the exact date, I gotta look it up, but I know when it, when, when it flashed by me, my, my reaction was it had to be this meeting, so.
There's a typo in the last clause, 61,513 versus 63.
I have a question. Why do we always get these when there's only a week or two left to approve them? Why can't we get these things where there's a reasonable timeframe for us to discuss them?
That's a question for the administration.
Does that happen frequently?
Yes, because federal government's also very much, oh, we got this money, you got it, you got it, you got to take it, you got it, they got to spend it fast.
A lot of times with the grants, it gets frustrating, because, you know, when we go to write them, a lot of times too, you got to get, like, and they require multiple letters of support. And then you're scurrying to get that, so it does get frustrating at the deadline. Thank you for hopping on it.
Um, while Mr. Gross is looking up the actual deadline, I want to go ahead and move to 252 dash, I'm sorry, nope, that's it. Yeah, that's it, okay. So let's move to ordinance on second and final reading, we are going to move to table all of the ordinances on second and final reading until the next meeting. That's going to be ordinance number 2741 through.
2769.
Not 2778.
No.
There's, there's other ones on there.
Okay.
Yeah, 2769.
Let me go through each of them.
Well, I, I already made a note, 2741 through 27.
69.
Yes, correct, so, yeah.
Can I just double check?
And then 20.
I want to make sure.
We'll come back, yeah.
So it's. Right, 2141.
2741.
2741 through what?
2769.
59 or 69?
69, 2769.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, and then, uh, Mr. Gross, did you find the date?
No, I'm still working on that.
Okay.
I interrupted that because I wanted to make sure I understood this.
Okay, no problem. And then we have also on, uh, second reading.
Well, we have to table those first.
We didn't do a motion.
Okay, so.
Make a motion to table.
I'll second that, okay, all right.
I think you need to be careful, and this is on second reading?
Yeah.
Need to postpone it to a specific.
Yeah, you have to have a specific date.
I said to the next meeting.
7/11.
Okay.
Okay. Um. Let me take the vote on that, Councilwoman Castellino?
Uh, yes.
Councilwoman Geber Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpas?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes. All right, and then we have, um. 2774 dash 23, an ordinance amending Chapter 5, Section 32.1 and 32.11 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange. Police Requested Towing and Storage Services.
Is there a motion to introduce on second and final?
I make a motion.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman, uh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Geber Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpas?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes. 27, and the motion, the motion.
This is on second, so we need a public hearing.
All right, all right.
So is there anyone in the general public that would like to make a statement on this ordinance?
This is 2774, amending Chapter 5, Police Requested Towing and Storage Services. If there is no one in the council chambers, uh, Mr. Biggin, is there anyone online?
Uh, Council President saying none.
Thank you. Yeah, colleagues, do you have any comments? Hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to?
So, second.
Okay, we need to slow down, please, because it's, I'm gonna, you know.
It's gonna need to erase, not even 10 o'clock.
Yes, so can I have those motions again, please?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Geber Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpas?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes. 2775 dash 23, an ordinance amending Chapter 19, Section 10 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange Annual Sewer Charges. Is, um.
Well, I do a motion, you do the public hearing, then you have an opportunity to.
Yeah, so I move for the acceptance of this ordinance.
Second. Uh, that's to introduce on second and final.
That's the.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Geber Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes, to introduce.
Councilwoman Scarpas?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
Now's the time for public hearing.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on the sewer fees? State your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, Michaela Bennett, Old Indian Road. Um, I just wanted to, um, put on the record. The idea that changing how we collect sewer fees. Without any understanding of usage and how usage would be impacted. I was driving when I heard Mr. Gross explain that he wanted to consider usage for, um, private sewer fees. But that he was planning on changing, or you're planning on, um, approving a change. So that commercial properties are going to go to usage. I'm assuming that means nursing homes. I don't know if that means executive drive. I think you need to know how that's going to impact. Um, but I also think that you should consider, and I hope that you have already, but if not. The unintended consequences of using a bedroom scenario, the number of bedrooms in someone's home, I don't care, personally, I don't care. My sewer, um, fees go from whatever they are, 350 per lot, to 550 per lot, because I've got four plus bedrooms, I don't care. It's not gonna impact me. But I'm thinking of all the seniors in this community who want to age in place in homes that once were filled with children. That they're now, you know, living in, and you're going to increase their sewer fees, and it may not feel like a lot to you. But if that person is on a double lot, that means that their sewer fees, even though there might be one or two people in the home. Their homes have four and five bedrooms. I don't know that you've considered those consequences, and I don't know how many people that's going to impact, but I find it quite curious that. Uh, Mr. Gross thinks it's fine to go to usage for commercial properties, but wants to really weigh and understand the consequences of doing that. And thinks he needs to wait until next year, why do you need to change? I don't get it. I, I don't get it, and, and I listened to Mr. Gross earlier talking about the sewer situation. And, you know, if, if he's wondering why people won't take him at his word. Like, just look at what happened to police and fire, who did something that was completely within their right to do. I. Do you have unconflicted legal advice that tells you that what he's planning on doing is lawful? And if you don't have that, should you be making this decision? But I strongly urge you to table this like you're tabling everything else that's on second reading. And reconsider how it's going to actually impact people and whether or not it's lawful. And if you trust that it's lawful, based on Mr. Gross's very circuitous answer to Councilwoman Geber Michael, when she asked him a direct question that could have been answered yes or no, I believe it's lawful. Um, then, then move forward, but I. But I really think you should take pause and consider how this is going to impact the most vulnerable in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
The whole process.
Name and address for the record, please.
Morelli, Ralph Road.
Thank you.
Everybody here then? Going back to the, the survey, senior survey, and the issues were, can you afford to age in place? With the route that is being taken or being laid out for seniors, we can't stay here. We just can't stay here. We have empty rooms, I live like that. Empty rooms. I'm paying for empty rooms, that doesn't make sense. Seniors call me every day, how can I pay this extra tax? I just can't afford it, social security and the pension hasn't gone up. I have to pay more taxes, and I shouldn't be paying more taxes. I want to age in place and stay here, but I can't. So this is getting really serious, we're talking about big dollars and cents now. This is not like a hundred dollar increase. The other worry they have is, if I sell my house, who's going to buy it? Soon as they hear about the taxes, they won't buy my house. So the property values are going to start going down. And these people are going, these people being me and all the other seniors are the people who are most affected. And we have to consider everybody that lives in this town, that they should be able to afford to live here and age in place. We want to stay here, I don't want to move out of West Orange. I don't know how much longer I can stay here. So I think a lot of thought has to be given to all of the, how they're going to charge for whatever it is, for how many bedrooms or whatever. You have to do some real in-depth research, and I would recommend some court of a survey, some sort of a survey. We did that, Michelle, right? Worked out good? It's going real good? Okay. But now we need more help. It worries me. I probably get more phone calls than anybody else in the town. A light goes out on Main Street, I get a phone call because it didn't get fixed right away. So bear that in mind, if you all want to live here and age in place, be very careful with how we spend our money allocated. Revenue isn't being generated, it only is generated when you raise taxes, and who gets affected? Seniors. So give it a lot of thought, please, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fagan, anyone on Zoom?
Yes, Kevin Malanga, welcome to the meeting, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan. Kevin Malanga, Ridge Road, good evening, Council President, members of the council. Could someone please explain to me why there is a separate sewer charge as opposed to simply wrapping this into the municipal portion of our property taxes, and then distributing that cost over the entire township? Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President, I am seeing no other hands.
Yes, Ms. Silvestri.
Thank you. Claire Silvestri, Twenty Grand View Avenue. I just wanted to add a few more comments based on what some of the other residents have said. I know that there are several of our partners in the joint meeting who are charging resident, residents and businesses by usage. Milburn, Maplewood, I believe Hillside. So that data should be pretty easy to get. Also, during the budget hearing, Mr. Gross said that we were going to do it based on bedrooms rather than bathrooms, because we didn't have the data on bathrooms, but appraisals, check. You know, they, we have data on both, on bedrooms and bathrooms. It's very, all of this is very strange, and I must admit that, you know, I appreciate you asking the questions of Mr. Gross. I still didn't quite understand where all that other millions of dollars that we're collecting is going to. This seems very complicated, and I would, as the other residents, urge you to table this tonight and do more research and get this straight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any of my colleagues have any comments?
Yeah, I do.
Councilwoman? Yes, it is.
Yeah, I mean, I pulled it out, and I got it. I've got it, might highlight it up. Also, because this is really vague, and I agree, we need to do a little more work. I mean, it says, it talks about how we're going to treat seniors, and it says certain seniors, and it doesn't talk about what we're actually going to do. I've gotten the same feedback that Mrs. Morelli's gotten from the seniors, and they are so frightened that they are not going to be able to live in this town.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman?
So, because we have discussed that, and again, I missed the one meeting because I was away, but the prior meeting that was, this first came up, and I raised a concern about our empty nesters. I thought we were gonna, was, is there going to be a process that the seniors could apply to freeze their current tax?
Well, we discussed a lot of, we, there is a program that is currently enabled. It doesn't, it, it has limitations put on it by the state. So there's not a lot of people that have qualified for it, certainly will promote it. We also had discussions about, I think, pretty wide discussions about whether or not, from a social safety net type, whether we could find other solutions to try to deal with people that had real difficulties with it. But there's no mechanism in place right now, other than, you know, the, the whole idea of the, instead of charging everyone five fifty, the idea was using, at least using the bedrooms, that, that at least there's logic to the fewer bedrooms, the, the, the lower the contribution, and, and that that would give some relief to some people. So there is some built into this, it's not perfect. And, and I dare say, I don't know that when we look at water consumption, that it will be perfect either, but we're, again, we're committed to do that. In the meantime, this, this gets us to where the council wanted to get in terms of its budget, that it's adopted, that it's introduced for adoption, and the administration believes that, that the best thing, best thing right now is to adopt this and then move forward researching in the future, starting next year with alternate methods, even better methods, but this will give some relief.
Okay, but what about a pro, like, I would need to know a process how the seniors could freeze their.
There is no process to freeze, that just doesn't exist.
Well, can we create one for our residents, for the seniors to freeze?
We'll research that.
I thought there was a discount.
There is a discount.
There's a discount, but it, and it's, it's in the ordinance.
Yeah, it's big, it's so big.
But what's, yeah, what's the process? Because that, that's where I was confused too. That's what I understand, it doesn't, it's not that clear.
It's, it's a process that would be administered through the, the tax office. Again, the, the income limits are set by the state, and I don't have the details on that, but they're, they're not high. I mean, they're.
No, they're, it's a hundred thousand-ish or less, right? I mean, for two people. Yeah, well, for two, if you have two, well, okay, so it would be less if it was one.
I mean, I, I'm, again, I don't want to quote a number because I don't know it off the top of my head, but it's, it's, it's not a large number. I mean, it is, like I said, I think we have forty-five people.
Are we required to have the income component? Because we had a little bit of conversation about this, and I understand your intent. You know, and I, I, it's okay, Councilwoman Castellino, but.
Well, I just wanted to add on, Councilman, because I wasn't done, but the, the whatever the process is, it's going to have to be communicated through Ms. Van Dyke and her department. Because, for example, I don't, you know, people listening in here today, and if there's a mechanism that is in place that they could go on our website and view, or she communicates that through an email to her database. I mean, that needs to be done in order for me to vote for this.
We will, we will definitely, we will promote it, we will put it on our website. I just don't want to, I don't, I don't want to dangle a carrot that this is going to be broad sweeping, because my sense is that it's not, it's not. You know, I don't, I don't know how many people will actually qualify for it, but we will promote it, and we will try to get it out there, at least if there is anybody that qualifies, the people that qualify that don't know about it, that can benefit from it, we want to make sure that they can.
And so I want to remind my colleagues, as well as just, you know, inform you because you were absent. We spent almost an hour at the budget hearing, trying to deliberate, go over what we thought would be the most fair way to get there. We had asked Mr. Gross to provide the number of households, how many households in the municipality, how many bedrooms are in each of those households, and he was able to provide us with that information. We took that information based on the number of bedrooms per household, and then we came up with a formula so that we could increase the fees in a way that we thought was most equitable. Again, not understanding and having the information for usage. But again, you know, while there is an assumption that the usage may create a more equitable and fair pricing, we still don't have that information as yet. And so this was a very tough, tough, tough decision. I certainly opposed the increase for the very reason that I am concerned and very concerned about the municipal tax increase and a sewer tax increase. In my opinion, that's a double fee. And certainly to our seniors, which is why we did create some type of discount, and we discussed it for our seniors. But again, you know, as unfortunate as it is, I am a resident, I am a homeowner, I will have to pay the increase. While we are concerned about our seniors and being on, you know, fixed incomes, we all have financial hardships and difficulties, you know? So this is not something that this council has taken lightly, and we have deliberated extensively. And again, this comes back to what is very, very important for us to remember foremost, before we consider other options, is that we have to have this revenue in order to create a budget. And so certainly, we can talk about not having it, but the impact is going to be that if we don't increase the sewer fee, then the taxes are going to go up even more, because we need the revenue. And we just don't have the means to do that. This is painful. This is the stuff that we don't like doing. We just canceled fireworks. That's not something that any of us wanted to do. We want to provide opportunities for enjoyment for our residents, but we also have to be responsible, and fiscal responsibility is one of our primary goals. So as painful as it is, it's not that we're not taking into consideration. I have a kid in college, not that anybody cares, but I'm, I have to pay it. As a matter of fact, I'm going to have two kids in college. So it's unfortunate, but it's the reality of the job that we have been elected to do. There are hard decisions that have to be made, but we have to balance our budget.
I have a question. Mr. Gross, are we bound by the state or maybe federal income limits to, you know, for this twenty-five percent discount?
This particular program, yes.
So there's no.
My understanding, and I will research further, but my understanding that this is a state-enabled program.
The twenty-five percent on the sewer bill? Okay. Just for clarity, I understand the, I understand.
And if we find out that that's not the case, and, and that there is some additional actions that we can take, we'll certainly bring that back to you.
And if you brought that back, let's say, two months from now, would we be able to do it in, in this cycle, to have the discount applied to seniors as of the next bill? Assuming that it were, like, because one of the issues that we have is we're going to have to wait some period of time before we can move to a usage model, or even if we move there. So is it possible, if within the next thirty or sixty days we find out we can do it, that we could actually do it?
If, if something, we'll find out within the next week, so we would, we will have an answer for you by the eleventh.
Okay.
So, you know, and, and that way, at least we'll know during the collection process. It's not something that we would want to be doing after the collection.
Councilwoman, is there a motion you'd like to put forward?
Yeah, I think I'd like to make a motion to table this.
I still had a couple of questions before we. So folks asked about the bedroom versus bathrooms, and I think it's important that they understand the logic. Even if you go by the bathroom model, and this is what I understand from conversation with you, I don't know that you said it this way, but the bathroom model doesn't necessarily guarantee you less usage. If you have one person in a house and they have three bathrooms, they're still going to pay for three bathrooms. And then can you just speak to Mr. Malanga's question? I, I think other towns, I know other towns do this, you've mentioned it yourself, with regard to why not wrap it into property taxes?
Yeah, I mean, the, the whole idea is, is to make sure, again, this goes back to the idea of taxpayer groups versus the user groups, and they're not the same group. So you have, currently have the taxpayers paying the whole bill, or, or, well, more, a higher percentage of the bill than, than their usage, and you have users who are paying a lower percentage of, of the bill based on their usage. So by shifting to the, the user, more to the user method, it's a more, it's a more equitable distribution of, of the cost.
And so with regard to the question about commercial properties like senior build, senior assisted living facilities, the rehab centers, and those kind of places, they use equivalent, they use.
Well, they're more of a commercial use, keeping in mind that, you know, there, there may be, there may be smaller units, but there's a lot of different activity that would go on in, in, in a, a, a single unit home. So, you know, that, that, those are just different uses, and, and they would be, they would be charged accordingly.
Right, so it's not that they're not paying. They're going to, they're going to pay, right, based on the equivalency unit, right? So, and it's not like it's one unit. It's, it's, there's a formula used to determine how many units this particular building or business. Right?
That's correct.
All right, and then last thing is, just to reiterate, we are going to look to do this analysis to go to a better model next year. Thank you.
And I just, the, in, in terms of, of moving this along, it's really, this is the, the the basis by which the budget was introduced, and this should be adopted in a timely manner so that we can start billing. If you do not adopt it, we can't start billing, which triggers a whole other host of issues, including having to borrow and interest and things of that nature. So this is something that is definitely timely.
So is there a, the ability to table it to the July eleventh meeting and not have the financial impact of having to borrow money? If we do so?
No.
So if we table this to July eleventh, we will then have to borrow money?
Yeah, it just pushes, it pushes the collection period into the fall, you know, the late, you know, late, late summer, early fall.
Okay, thank you. Yes, you have someone else on?
Yes, Council President, we have Phil Litmakoff, welcome to the meeting, please state your name and address for the record.
I, I closed comment and deferred to my colleagues for additional comment.
My apologies, Council President.
Thank you. Okay.
So I moved for the acceptance of this ordinance.
On second and final reading?
Yes.
Is there a second?
This is the introduction on second.
No, this is to approve, yes.
So they can get the bills out.
Right, is there a second?
I will second it, but with the understanding that we're going to get that information out to our, our seniors and to update the website.
Yeah, I have a note to let them know that tomorrow.
Okay.
It is on the website, by the way, but it's.
Old information.
Information, right, so I'll have them updated.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll take the vote. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes, and I, and I have this, I want the information on the twenty-five percent.
Yeah. Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes, I want the income lev, 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 to, the income limit for this.
Council President Williams?
Yes, thank you.
The motion passes.
And again, there have been some specific requests in, in passage of this ordinance. One, to make sure the information is updated on the website, to confirm that the twenty-five percent eligibility and who it applies to, and a wide dissemination of all of the information to as many senior households as can possibly be obtained.
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk is learning shorthand.
I have, I have to come back.
All right, and 2776, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, trap, traffic subsection 7-32.1, handicap parking on streets and subsection 7-32.2, restricted parking zones of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange.
Is there a motion to introduce? Okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpia?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on the ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7 traffic? Anyone in the Zoom audience?
Seeing none, Council President.
Thank you. Public comment is closed. Colleagues, any questions regarding this ordinance? There being none, Madam Clerk, the vote.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpia? Council President Williams.
Yes. Motion carries and passes. 2777-23, an ordinance creating a reclassification and salary schedule of certain township of West Orange employees, setting forth their titles, classification and salary ranges, and adopting a salary guide and establishing the employee's status as a township employee and under the guidelines of the New Jersey Department of Personnel, new grant position, social family service worker trainee.
Is there a motion to introduce?
Second. Is there anyone from the?
I have to take a vote.
I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpia?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on ordinance 2777-23? Anyone in the Zoom audience?
Council President seeing none.
Thank you. Public comment?
I'm sorry, someone just raised their?
Okay, sure.
Christine, welcome to the meeting. Please state your full name and address for the record. Christine, can you hear us?
Yes, it's Christine Bosco.
Please state your full name and address for the record.
Christine Bosco, Lower Mason Place, West Orange. And first of all, I had my hand raised during the sewer thing, and you just ignored me and said it wasn't raised. Okay, this is very disturbing because that's what I want to speak about. And that's why I raised my hand on this one.
I'm sorry, are you speaking regarding the ordinance on?
I'm talking about the ordinance on the sewer. I had my hand raised and I was never called. And I'm very upset about that.
I apologize.
And I never got a chance to say anything about it.
Okay, I apologize, and that motion has already been approved?
I know it has. It's over the fact, but the thing was, my hand was raised and I never got the opportunity to speak.
Okay, do you have any comments regarding the ordinance now being heard?
No, I'm just, the reason I raised, my hand has been raised all along.
I apologize, Mr. Fagan, that will close. Is there anyone else in the Zoom audience with their hand raised? Seeing none?
No, seeing none, Council President.
All right, colleagues, any questions regarding 2777?
Madam Clerk? Okay, is there a motion to approve on second and final?
So move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpia?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Just, I'm sorry, Council President, for that young lady, you can please email your comments. We certainly like to know what it was you were thinking as we continue to move forward with this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. 2778-23, an ordinance authorizing the revision of the West Orange Municipal Code requiring businesses to obtain a mercantile license and certain liability insurance.
Is there a motion to introduce on?
So move.
Second.
I've got to do a vote. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpia?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes. Is there anyone in the council chambers that wants to speak on 2778? Mr. Fagan, anyone in the Zoom audience?
Seeing none, Council President.
Thank you. Colleagues, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to?
So move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpia?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes. The motion passes. 2806-23, calendar year 2023, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cat bank.
Oh, I'm sorry, is there a motion to introduce?
Second.
I'm sorry, who said the first one? Sorry. Thank you, thank you. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpia?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes. Is there anyone in the council chambers that would like to speak on 2806? Mr. Fagan, anyone in our Zoom audience, 2806?
Council President seeing none.
Thank you. Colleagues, that will close public comment. Colleagues, any commentary on 2806? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpia?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes. Now we are moving on to ordinances on first reading, and I think we should probably move forward with the recommendation of the administration, which is to approve on?
Introduce.
Introduce on?
An introduction.
Yeah, approve on introduction, and then the additional information that is required will certainly be provided before second reading. So at this time, we will move forward with 2779-23, an ordinance amending Chapter 7, Section 4.1 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange. This involves on-street regulations and school zones. I move for the acceptance of this on first reading.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpia?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes.
Council President, I'm sorry, I'm going to use the restroom, so I'm going to vote yes on the other ones.
Well, is it possible, so, oh, because it's an ordinance, we can't?
We have to read it, yeah.
Okay, for all of them?
Okay, but I don't think legal's okay with it.
All right, for, for 20, can I get your yes vote for 2780?
Wait.
Passing ordinance, so I don't think you want to take shortcuts. It just doesn't make sense.
Understood, thank you. But for 2780, your vote is yes on the record. Thank you. 2780, an ordinance amending Chapter 7, Section 8.9 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, construction zone violations and penalties. I move for the acceptance of 2780 on first reading.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael said yes. Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpia?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes. The motion passes. 2781-23, an ordinance amending Chapter 7, Section 14.10E of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, parking of commercial vehicle on streets and penalties. I move for the acceptance of this ordinance, 2781, on first reading.
Second.
Okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael stated yes, that she was going to vote yes on the rest of these. Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpia?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes. The motion passes. 2782-23, an ordinance amending Chapter 10, Section 3.4 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, pet shops, kennel shelters, pound license fees. I move for the acceptance of 2782.
I think it's introduction. I think.
Yeah, it's to introduce on first reading.
I move for the acceptance of the introduction on first reading of 2782.
Okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael stated yes. Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpia?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes on first reading. 2783-23, an ordinance amending Chapter 10, Section 2.5 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, licensing of dog fees. I move for the acceptance on first reading of 2783.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes, to introduce.
I'm sorry?
Yes, to introduce. We're not accepting these. We're introducing them.
First reading, correct. Councilwoman Scarpia? Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes to introduce on first reading. 2784-23, an ordinance amending Chapter 10, Section 8.7 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, control of animals, fees for impoundment, redemption, boarding, medical treatment and adoption. I move for the acceptance of this ordinance, 2780, I'm sorry, introduction. Well, see, I'm saying acceptance on first reading, which is exactly the same, but I'm saying it in a different format. So thank you. I'm saying the same thing. It's just my way.
All right.
Thank you.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes, to introduce.
Councilwoman Scarpia?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion to introduce passes on first reading. 2784-23, an ordinance amending Chapter 10, Section 8.7 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, control, wait, that's the same one we just did. 84?
85.
Now we're on 85. An ordinance amending Chapter 10, Section 10 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, commission of nuisance prohibited violations, penalties. I move for the acceptance on first reading of this ordinance, number 2785.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes, to introduce.
Councilwoman Scarpia?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes to introduce on first reading. 2786-23, an ordinance amending Chapter 10, Section 11.3 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, licensing of cats, licensing requirements. I move for the acceptance of 2786 on first reading.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes, to introduce.
Councilwoman Scarpia?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes. 2787-23, an ordinance amending Chapter 10, Section 11.4 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, licensing of cats penalty. I move for the acceptance on first reading of 2787.
Just for clarity, it could be construed, if we vote to accept it, that we are voting to approve it. If we're introducing it, it's a two-step process.
You got to pass on second reading.
It's still.
Thank you. We appreciate.
There's a lack of clarity there, and I think the clerk acknowledges it. Yes, really.
Okay.
2787, I move for the acceptance on first reading of the ordinance amending Chapter 10.
Okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes, to introduce.
Councilwoman Scarpia?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes. 2788-23, an ordinance amending Chapter 12, Section 3.4 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, food handler certificate fee, use of fee. I move for the acceptance on first reading.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes, to introduce.
Councilwoman Scarpia?
The motion passes. 2789-23, an ordinance amending Chapter 11, Section 7.6 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, unlawful acts by persons under legal age for purchase of alcoholic beverages, disorderly persons, violations, penalties. I move for the acceptance on first reading of 2789.
Is there a second?
Second.
Council President, I just want to go back to 2788. I did not hear your vote on that.
My vote was yes.
Thank you. All right, and is, okay, so this is a vote on 2789. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes, to introduce.
Councilwoman Scarpia?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes. 2790-23, an ordinance amending Chapter 12, Section 6.2 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, sale or delivery of ICE application license fee. I move for the acceptance of 2790 on first reading.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes, to introduce.
Councilwoman Scarpia?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes. 2791-23, an ordinance amending Chapter 12, Section 7.5 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, privy vaults, cesspools and septic tanks fees for permit. I move for the acceptance on first reading of 2791.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes, to introduce.
Councilwoman Scarpia?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes. 2792-23, an ordinance amending Chapter 12, Section 7.11 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Or-
This is different. This is enforcement.
Right.
Yeah, same thing.
Privy vaults, cesspools and septic tanks enforcement. I move for the acceptance on first reading. Of 2792.
Okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes, to introduce.
Councilwoman Scarpia?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes for introduction. 2793-23, an ordinance amending Chapter 12, Section 8.14 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, tobacco and nicotine delivery products penalties. I move for the acceptance on first reading.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes, to introduce.
Councilwoman Scarpia?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes. 2794-23, an ordinance amending Chapter 12, Section 7.7 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, privy vaults, cesspools and septic tanks permit to operate all and individual subsurface sewage disposal system. I move for the introduction on first reading of 2794.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes, to introduce.
Councilwoman Scarpia?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes. 2795-23, an ordinance amending Chapter 12, Section 9.9 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, tattoo and body piercing establishments permits fees. I move for the acceptance on first reading of 2795-23.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes, to introduce.
Councilwoman Scarpia?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes. 2796-23, an ordinance amending Chapter 12, Section 9.20 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, tattoo and body piercing violations and penalties. I move for the acceptance on first reading of 2796.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes, to introduce.
Councilwoman Scarpia?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes. 2797-23, an ordinance amending Chapter 12, Section 11.3 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, e-cigarette licensing, licensing fees. I move for the introduction on first reading of 2797.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpia?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes.
Council President, just real quick with a a comment for the administration on this one.
Certainly.
Hopefully, we'll get to pass it next uh uh meeting. But where where did we land? Uh, where I say? He walked away. All right, I gotta ask him tomorrow. I want to see where we landed with the uh with the e-cigarettes for the cannabis in there with the fees for that.
It's a separate entity is what we were advised.
Okay, then we need a, then we they need to-
We have to do something separate for that.
Yeah, that should have been on this one. Okay, I'll follow up with that.
Okay, thank you. Twenty, um.
So twenty-seven ninety-eight?
Ninety-eight dash twenty-three and ordinance amending chapter thirteen, section four point one of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange e-cigarette licensing violations and penalties. I move for the acceptance on first reading.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino? Councilwoman Geber Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes, to introduce.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes. Twenty-seven ninety-nine dash twenty-three and ordinance amending chapter thirteen, section four point two of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange plan review fee. I move for the acceptance in on introduction of twenty-seven ninety-nine.
Second.
Councilwoman Cas- thank you. Councilwoman Geber Michael? Councilman Rutherford?
Yes, to introduce.
Councilwoman Scarpah? Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes. Um, twenty-seven, twenty-eight hundred dash twenty-three and ordinance amending chapter thirteen, section four point three of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange demolition. I move for the introduction on first reading and acceptance.
Councilwoman Castellino? Councilwoman Geber Michael? Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes. Twenty-eight oh one dash twenty-three and ordinance amending chapter thirteen, section four point four of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange building removal. I move for the acceptance and introduction of first reading.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino? Councilwoman Geber Michael? Councilman Rutherford?
Yes, to introduce.
Councilwoman Scarpah? Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes. Twenty-eight oh two dash twenty-three and ordinance amending chapter thirteen, section seven point four of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange electrical subcode fees. I move for the introduction and acceptance on first reading.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino? Count, uh, sorry, Councilwoman Geber Michael? Councilman Rutherford?
Yes, to introduce.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes. Twenty-eight oh three dash twenty-three and ordinance amending chapter thirteen, section seven point five of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange fire system fees. I move for the acceptance and in on on introduction of first reading.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino? Councilwoman Geber Michael? Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes. Twenty-eight oh four dash twenty-three and ordinance amending chapter thirteen, section eight point one one of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange fire prevention subcode permit fees. I move for the acceptance on first reading introduction.
Second.
Yes.
Councilwoman Geber Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes. Twenty-eight oh seven dash twenty-three and ordinance establishing fourteen, chapter fourteen, section twenty-one of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange registration of vacant property. I move for the acceptance on first reading.
Second, yes.
Okay, hold on one second, sorry. Uh, Councilwoman Geber Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes, to introduce.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, the motion passes. And twenty-eight oh seven dash twenty-three and ordinance establishing chapter fourteen, section twenty-one of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange. Wait, I just did that.
Right.
Okay, twenty-eight oh eight dash twenty-three. And ordinance amending chapter five, section thirty-four point two, section thirty-four point three, section thirty-four point four, section thirty-four point five, section thirty-four point six, section thirty-four point eight and chapter twenty-five, section twenty-four point two of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange licensed cannabis entities. I move for the acceptance on first reading of this ordinance twenty-eight oh eight.
Second, yes, and I have questions.
Okay, Councilwoman Geber Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, questions, Councilwoman?
So, we, today we uh received uh uh email from one of our investors. And there was a question on page four, number five. Mr. Kizer, if you could, upon termination or expiration of the lease agreement, the licensed cannabis uh uh entity must cease all operations. So, there was a question to that extent.
If, but let's kind of take take each question. Um, it is, it is-
I don't have the email in front of me.
No, I can pull it up. It's not a patent. However, it's my understanding that not only do you have to have state approval, but you still have to have local approval. And if you lose either of those approvals, state or local, you must cease to operate. And so, this is referring to local approval.
Okay, so it's to the letter of support.
To the letter of support.
Okay, which makes sense because that's what happened with the other, the other entities that lost their leases. They lost the letter of support that went with that location. Then you would need to reapply like the last entity did. Okay, that clears any questions? Then page five, thirty, number thirty-four with ownership. I don't think anything. I have to read through it. I didn't get a chance because I saw the email right before I left to come here late. So, we gotta just look at that just to make sure it's clear with her question.
To um the legal department for clarification.
You're getting very hard to hear. As soon as you started talking, the air conditioning came on and it's like-
Yeah, so there was another question um on uh section thirty-four on page five with the ownership. But I don't have the email in front of me, Council President.
Yes, I can pull it up.
The email. I just want to make sure we don't have to change anything tonight. Or if it's okay as it's written.
Paragraph C?
Now, page four. Um, so no later than five days prior to the termination or expiration of the current lease agreement, the licensed cannabis entity shall provide an updated executed agreement to the township clerk or cease all at operations was the inquiry. If this could be rephrased, and we will have to have legal take a look at um. Councilwoman, we can't hear you.
Oh, what exactly did they need it to be refr- what are they objecting to? Because we've gone through this so many times.
I think what they're trying to do is make sure that they have an opportunity to cure if they are suddenly terminated. Um, normally, when you terminate a lease, and there's some real estate professionals here, there's some time. But we've had some unusual circumstances where it was done suddenly. And if it is done suddenly, while it may have some legal repercussions, they want to know that they have an opportunity to cure so that they don't have to reapply.
So, again, coming from a real estate profession, five days prior to the termination or expiration, you know that your lease expires when you sign a lease. There's no confusion there. Because it's it's the term of the lease. Um, I think what Arantin is, is to make sure with your lease that it's con concurrent, that it just continues to roll over. So, I'm not clear on why five days prior to the termination would actually be necessary. Because you, most leases require that you renew them sixty days prior to termination. That's a standard New Jersey contractual provision.
I totally understand that. I think they are trying to be protected in the event that the lease is terminated suddenly.
But if the lease is terminated suddenly, then you no longer have a letter of support and approval. Because, again, our approval, this is someone who's operating. So, our approval is, if you're operating, is to that location. So, again, if you are terminated from that location unexpectedly, that's that's it.
Right, and I think what they're getting at is they want in the in the ordinance, some language that allows them not to just have to stop and start over from scratch, but an opportunity to cure.
But here's the problem, and this is why what you did with the last application, you know, there was no inter- So, the last application, we, you know, a lot of steps weren't taken because the first, the new lo- the new, the app, it was same applicant, different location. Should have came in for an interview.
Updated security.
Updated security. There was multiple steps that that go with that process. You guys didn't know that because Task Force took care of some of that the last time.
Yeah, I knew it.
And and so therefore, this time, it should have been done thi- this time around by us. And and that what didn't happen. So, you know, you move, you lose your location, you know, that's on them.
So, I understand and don't disagree with what you said. I think that is, both with regard to the last one and in general, I think that is completely accurate. I I, in addition to that, I think what they're trying to protect against is a similar situation with the landlord so that instead of us having to kind of figure it out and build the plane as we're flying, we have a mechanism in place that addresses that if they have uh site control removed from them, i- it it may not even be legal, but they would have to go through a legal process. You know, they'd have to go through the courts if they were to challenge it. And I think what they're trying to do is just have a mechanism in place so that they don't have to start over from scratch. Now, I think on second reading, they will further clarify that, and I would hope that they would further clarify it after hearing these comments too. Because I'm guessing at what they're getting at after having spoken with some of them.
Right, so also, I want to just, again, reiterate what New Jersey law is. And you cannot terminate a lease instantly and remove someone. That is a court process in the state of New Jersey. So, even if there is a lease termination based on a violation of the lease, it still has to go through a court process. The court process is going to require that they be served notice. It usually takes about thirty days to go through the courts before you can even get a date to be heard. So, this process that they're asking for is already mechanisms in place with a lease agreement to cure that. Tho- those things can't just happen.
Right, well, I think if we didn't have three cannabis entities suddenly lose site control, then they probably wouldn't have even flagged this. But because three of them have suddenly unexpectedly, even with a lease in place, lost site control and had to move. And while they may choose to litigate that themselves, that is on them, I don't know. They still lost site control.
But they're not open. This is once they're open.
Yeah.
This is once they're open.
I, so-
And they find a new location, they have to come reapply for that location.
No, I get it. Um, you you guys, it's, I don't understand how this is not clear. It is entirely possible for a bad actor to act badly. That's the point. In this case, three of the seven that have gone through this or started the process have had a bad actor act badly. And it, there may be rules and regulations and laws and customary procedures. But in this particular case, these cannabis entities, for whatever reason, were treated in what I think is contradiction to their lease agreement. And they may have legal repercussion, but in the meantime, they still have to 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 find another place to locate their business. So, even though they they haven't opened yet, it's not entirely impossible that they could have the same experience after they open. And and it's a good thing it happened now in some sense because they're not open and they don't have to move all of that inventory and equipment. But the fact that it happened means it can happen.
It can't happen in the state of New Jersey.
It just happened three times.
But they weren't operating businesses.
They had a lease.
But they weren't operating. This refers to them being in operation. So, this is, again-
All right, so let's, can can we just play it out?
Okay.
If a if a cannabis property is open and operating and landlord comes in and says, you know what, I don't like you. I want you to leave, for whatever reason. It could be completely arbitrary. I don't want you here. You have three days to vacate.
Can't happen in the state of New Jersey.
They could, they may have legal protections. They can petition a court. In the meantime, they've got to make plans for their business, which is what I think they're getting at. But look, we can, we can, I I'm I'm trying to understand what they're getting at and advocate for that. If you don't want to have that conversation now, we don't have to. It's not on on second reading. If we get to next week and they bring attorneys here and they communicate that, then we're going to have to start over from first reading, so.
Understood.
All right, as long as everybody understands.
Thank you.
I just think, given, given Council President's um knowledge and background on this, that it's clearly something that we really-
It's not applicable.
-worrying about, and this has been litigated some-
Absolutely, thank you. Um, and then there was a question regarding the request to change ownership, and the council decides against it. The cannabis entity is still licensed and legally allowed to continue its operation under its original ownership structure, not in West Orange. That's why you have to have not only the approval from the state, but approval from the local governing body and the municipality. So, again, this is a two-edged sword for you to legally operate a cannabis entity in the township of West Orange. You must have your state approval, but at the same time, you must also have local approval.
Council President, that's not a, quite what she's getting at here. What she's saying is they are able, if if a change in ownership is denied, if the council says no, they would then still be able to continue to operate under their original ownership structure. They just wouldn't be able to change the structure. But the way the language reads, if we deny the change, then they have to cease operations.
So, this one, we will have legal confirm and verify. I do see your point on this one. Um, so we'll just make sure the language um is indicated appropriately.
Mr. Kizer, did you see that in there?
Wh- which paragraph? You're talking on page five?
This is page five, number five dash thirty-four point six C. So, we just want-
C?
Yes. Clarification, if if someone comes to change the ownership structure and we say no, they don't have to immediately cease and desist operations. They can continue under their original structure that has been approved, is what they're asking for clarity for. Because we have granted them the authorization to function in that capacity that was approved. So, we'll have legal just clarify. If we say no to the change, that's why we wanted to understand as far as our colleagues are concerned, myself included, that's why we wanted to know who is ownership down to the human being as opposed to entities or LLCs. So, if they come and they say, hey, we want to-
I thought that was the way we're supposed to be included.
Exactly, it is. But the the question is, if they want to change and we deny that change, there is some non-clarity that they can still operate in under their original um existence. That person just can't be a new owner. So, we'll have the legal team look at that and make sure there's no confusion there. All right?
I do have a question?
Yes.
Is this work also being done for free?
Not this ordinance.
Yeah, I highlighted that paragraph.
Mr. Rose, is this work also being done for free?
So, it's not for free. It's with their salary.
Cannabis, the cannabis um ordinance, again, just preparing it is part of it, is 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 a no-charge item, but the background and research is is, it does get built.
Thank you. All right, that um is-
Council President?
Yes.
I have an answer for you on two fifty-one twenty-three. The date is the eleventh, so tonight is the night.
Okay.
Refresh me on two fifty again.
That's the ordinance for the grant, for the police department.
It requires a resolution of the governing body.
So, it was moved improperly seconded that we approved that tonight?
No, it was, it was, it was uh-[1599.22]
Tabbed.
No, it was not.
No, we did not table. We didn't do anything.
Didn't do anything with it yet. You took it off.
No, it was moved improperly seconded and I, and I said I wasn't rescinding it.
Neither was correct.
We didn't vote on it soon.
So we just need to vote.
We need to vote.
Okay. So on two fifty one dash twenty three, Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
No.
Councilwoman Sparpa.
Yes.
Council President Williams.
Yes, thank you. The motion passes. All right, so that resolves all of our ordinances and resolutions this evening. Council members, are there any pending matters, new matters or anything up for council discussion? We'd like to discuss the time for our meeting and perhaps consideration for moving the meeting up or changing the meeting time, Councilwoman.
Yes, I'd like to move the meeting time at least an hour.
I can't make it here. There's, it's impossible.
I, I, I understand the concern. I think we're doing an amazing job this evening and we still had a packed agenda trying to move some of the resolutions and ordinance from the past. One of the things that we've also talked about is making sure the public has access. If we were to start the meetings at five thirty, a lot of people are en route. They're not home from work. Some people travel from the city. So I'm very concerned about starting at five thirty. If we want to be contained, continue to be transparent and give the public an opportunity to participate in these meetings. And I think clearly we have seen an increase in Zoom participation as well as, you know, in-person activity. So while I do appreciate it, I think we can, we did a wonderful job this evening of curtailing our commentary. Everyone spoke probably less than 10 minutes in responding to the public. Certainly, we didn't have 30 people speaking, but I think we can just try and govern ourselves accordingly and see how this works out. I think we're doing an excellent job tonight.
Something else though, also, and I've mentioned it before in the past, I think that we should put an RFQ out for an attorney for this cannabis ordinance. Also, per the chief's recommendation, he is recommending that we create a cannabis advisor or put an RFQ out to have a cannabis consultant, which I support. I mean, the chief knows, I think he knows what he's talking about in his email and you read it on the record in the last meeting. I think we should really take that into consideration.
I think we did and I just don't, there wasn't support for it. But if there's a difference in the mood or temperament.
I won't support that.
Okay.
Well, I would, but I mean, I trust the judgment of the chief on, on the ability of the police to properly, you know, investigate those kinds of things. He says that the resources aren't there and the state AG has been very clear and trying to remove that stuff from the police department. So I think we do need to have a separate professional that understands the space, that understands the security requirements, understands the law and can give us advice and certainly with regard to violations.
Okay, so is there
Two separate things right there.
Well, I think we need more information.
Right, about what that would look like, about the expense. So certainly it's something that we can consider and we can ask the administration to get more information, including the chief, of what that actual role and responsibility responsibility would look like and the price tag because clearly we need money.
It would be very similar to what we're, we're currently doing with other contracts where we basically place a master to oversee the, the operation that is paid for by the operation itself. And that's the key to it. I mean, and there's, and there's different facets of it. There's, because there's different phases of the business. So there's different phases of the, of the activities. But the key is to, is that has to be enabled, I think by ordinance. I think the ordinance would have to be amended to, to enable it.
He actually said not to put it in the ordinance, to do it separately. That was his request in the email, not to make it a part of the ordinance, but for us to consider the, the, the opportunity.
Okay, we should have legal look at that.
Yes, okay, thank you.
I think the issue was he was going to, or someone was going to figure out the mechanism to pass that beyond, like understand what the cost is going to be to us.
Which is why I really think it does need to be in the ordinance.
Right.
Because if you're going to strap this, you know, bootstrap this cost to the, to the, to the license, there's got to be, you, you, you can't do that by resolution.
Okay. Well, why don't you all figure that out? Okay, thank you.
And one other thing, I need to understand what the state regulates because I'm understanding the state regulates multiple, multiple items with the business owner. So I need to get a clear picture of what the state role is and then what you want our role to be.
Thank you. All right, I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting so that we can go into the ABC hearing.
I've got a couple of things. So on the meeting issue, I, as discussed in the last meeting, I think we should have a working session of some sho, of some sort. Prior town councils in West Orange have had them. They've had them multiple times per month and done them regularly. I don't know that we need to start with multiple, but I do think we need to add at least one additional meeting where we can handle some of the work that we debate back and forth in these meetings, get that out of the way, have some general agreement so that when we get to the council meeting, we're not debating some of these issues. Now, that would require the administration to give us some of this stuff much earlier than we're getting it now. So if, if we're going to get the same packet on Thursday, you know, it would make sense to have, you know, I guess we could have a meeting on Monday.
This is all prescribed by ordinance, first of all.
Yeah.
Mr. Rose, please enter the microphone.
Right, I mean The ordinance, the, the process is completely prescribed by ordinance. As it is, we finished a meeting today. We have one week, not even, one week starting tomorrow to get in for the next meeting. So, so the, the, the planning process is, would have to be expanded. It makes it very difficult. Now, if you, if I'm, if I understand you correctly, it is, you're talking about a work session where you would debate things that you don't necessarily agree on first blush or things of that nature. So wouldn't that be something that you came up at a meeting and you realized that you didn't have, you know, that you needed to have more discussion and therefore you would push that into that meeting as opposed to agenda items for that meeting?
So I know it would have to be done by ordinance. This is just kind of tossing the idea around. What I, I think we need is a space where we can do some of this work. We've spent multiple times on cannabis alone. We have some other contentious issues. We've had multiple executive sessions. We've had multiple discussions about things that the council was not united on. And if we can handle that
But that's not driven by when you get it on your agenda though, right?
I'm sorry, say that again?
That's not driven, that is not driven by the agenda process. That's driven by, by the debate process.
Well, it is, but the point I was making is about the agenda is that if we were to add another meeting where we had the opportunity to do that, we'd have to have the information that was going to be on the agenda sooner because it doesn't make sense to get it, if we're going to, if we're going to add a meeting, which is, I think what's needed. Look, when you have meetings that go this long, it means you're not meeting frequently enough. You've got more work to do than the time to do it. So we can either have the long meetings or we can add another space where we handle some of that work. And we could decide what that was. We could take different portions of the agenda and do it all for that month in that meeting, whether it be the proclamations and the announcements and all, it could be whatever. We could handle the bills and that whatever. We could figure out what we're going to cover there, but have a separate space aside from these two meetings that we currently have because we've now gone to, you know, three o'clock on at least two occasions, two o'clock, I think on four or five. So I mean, that's showing that we need something.
No, we haven't.
Look, I mean, if you come up with it, you come up with what you want, we'll try to figure out if there's a better way to streamline help to get, get you where you want to go.
Well, that's the point of this is to kind of talk it out and see, see what folks think.
All right. Okay, so we'll continue that discussion. We've called special meetings when we felt that we needed to have additional time to discuss and flush out. I have no problem calling a special meeting and adding a special meeting when it's necessary. And I think we can continue into that vein if we find that having a working session prior to every meeting is going to work best for the council, certainly we can look to do that as well.
I have one discussion regarding Roxbury. Can you please, I guess, this up the administration, the mayor really, to come to the decision of what's going to be carved out? I mean, so that way we can start the process applying for green acres and putting an RFP out for vendors. I think that's critical.
Thank you.
I will have the discussion with the mayor.
All right.
We've had a few conversations about Roxbury.
Just about everything.
And nothing's happened.
All right, thank you. We're going through
So one more thing, Council President. We need our own council to guide us, to give us advice on how to get through the removal process of Mr. Trank. I know everybody wants me to rush through this. I'm not going to rush through it and not do it right. And, and I've looked at this and it requires a legal mind, someone who understands the law, to give us advice on how to move through this process for the, to get ready for that hearing. Yeah, and so the council needs, we need our own special counsel for that. I don't know the mechanism to do that. I don't know if I have to introduce that as a resolution. Mr. Kaiser can give us some advice, but if, if we want to have special counsel to advise us on this process and us, I'm saying the council, the town council, whether we agree or not. If we, if we agree that we, we need it, what is the mechanism to get it?
Mr. Kaiser.
Okay, I mean, I was waiting for you to finish, but there is no set method or procedure to do this. When, when you read the municipal council v. James case, which is, I think really the only case that really talks about this at all or to any great extent, and it's a New Jersey Supreme Court case, so that's, you know, an authoritative court. They indicate that when the mayor sues the council, the council sues the mayor, when they're both involved in litigation with each other, that you need a separate counsel for the council. This really would not be that situation, whether it's similar enough and you could justify hiring your own counsel for that task is an interesting question. I'm not going to give you an answer now, but I could think about it and do some research. But there's no set method to do it. My view is having read, I mean, and I read Gollan versus Cardinaly several times. It's an old case. I can't remember, goes back to the sixties or the seventies, but it talks about cause and what cause means and differentiations between the statutes that recall for good cause as opposed to cause. And there's, I think, another kind of cause that's also mentioned. I just, you know, it's, I don't know that you need separate counsel to do this. I think you need a discussion among yourselves in an open public meeting to determine whether you want to do this, what the charges would be, what the, what the concerns are. And then once that's done, it'd probably be in a better position to advise us to whether separate counsel would be needed. I mean, there's some question in my mind whether, everybody would need separate counsel, independent counsel. I just don't have an answer for that because again, the, the courts haven't discussed this in any detail. They haven't, they haven't, there's no set process that I've found. Sort of make it up.
I'm sorry, I'm going to ask that the audience remain quiet, please. Thank you. I certainly did not, but he wasn't talking. He made one comment. Well, I didn't hear that. I'm asking you to stop talking or I will ask you to remove.
Now, now, listen. Officer, you're going to have to remove some folks because this is now contentious. We're name-calling. If you can't maintain the quorum, if you can't be an adult and professional in here, then you're, brother, you already know me, all right? Let's
So wait, 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 I'm going to ask.
Excuse me. Mr. Officer, please have this man removed.
No, you're not going to have anybody
Please have him removed. He's making threats to a councilman.
We're not going to have anybody removed.
He's making threats to a councilman. He just invited me outside.
Thank you. I'm going to adjourn the meeting now and we will go into the ABC hearing. Do I have a second to adjourn?
This man just asked me to come outside. Yes, you did. I saw you.
Oh, no different. Councilman.
Did he do that? You didn't see him do that?
Councilman, councilman. I'm going to ask you to refrain from commentary as well.
No, I, I, I'm a councilman. I have the same rights and privileges as every other councilman.
Goes through the council president here, so.
Exactly. Can I have a second to the adjournment? And entering to ABC, please.
We didn't finish the conversation regarding special counsel, so we can't
I, I have a question. I have a question about that. A simple question. So that would incur spending money. I assume that's four votes to spend money on something like that?
I don't know that that would require four votes, but to spend money, I don't know about that.
Okay, so can we, can we just, Mr. Kaiser, can you come back to us and let us know our response to councilman's request?
It's not going to be an easy issue, I tell you that.
Understood, understood. But if you could just provide some type of clarity and direction, we would be most appreciated. Again, I'm going to ask for
Mr. Kaiser, will you do, please also let us know what our remedies are if we disagree with the legal analysis? So if you come back and say, hey, you can't do it at all, and I'm not saying that you will, what, what I'm saying is if whatever it is you present, if, if I disagree, I want to know what my remedies are. And obviously I would need to know what the, the, the kind of vote would have to be taken and what would be needed to make it.
Again, all of this flows from the Faulkner Act. And I've already given you the case of Indic and I think Washington, the Robson versus Washington Township, which is only a lot of cases, but it relies on Indic and it contains some added verbiage based on it. And that's the issue with respect to whether the council can have its own counsel. Generally, the council can't, but there is the discussion in the James case, which clearly indicates that if the mayor and the council are suing each other, of necessity, they would need separate counsel. But it's only in those circumstances. So, but I, I hear what you're saying and I'll also watch the tape of this, get everything together.
All right, thank you. All right, now, meeting to, motion to adjourn into the ABC hearing. Thank you.
All in favor? Any opposed?
No. Good night, West Orange. Thank you so much for joining us. Our next meeting will be on July 11th in both in-person and hybrid format. Thank you.